Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is September the 3rd, 2019. The time is 9:00 AM. I would ask Ms. Meredith Nichols, our OEM Director, if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am.
Yes.
And then she leaves.
Her job is done here.
That's right.
She's done her work.
Yep. Ma'am Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll call please?
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Canada.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Hi ma'am.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper.
Thank you ma'am. Audience introductions.
Audience introductions.
Thank you ma'am. Thanks for being here. Amendments to the agenda gentlemen?
None from me.
I have one. Oh, thank you. Due to somewhat not feeling well, Mr. Roth asked if he could be excused from the IT report, and I did so. So we can eliminate that. I would move to him in the agenda by striking the IT staff report.
I'll second it.
They're moving second to do him in the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Commissioner Cherry's. So IT will not be giving a staff report. Yes sir.
Are we going to reschedule or are we just not going to have one as well? We had a very good day.
Yeah, and that's what he said to me. He said, "You know, we just went through all that stuff." He said, "If you're okay." I said, "I think we're..."
I'm pretty good. He doesn't need to come back.
He said, "I'm just, it's business as usual. Nothing else has changed, so I'm assuming we just..." Good morning, sir.
Good day Cal.
Let the record show that Cal Leslie did enter the room.
With a haircut apparently.
We just missed our audience introduction, so I introduce you.
Well, good.
Good morning, how are you?
Ready to put up hay.
Good. So, yeah, we'll...
You want help, is that why? Can we go with you?
We'll have another IT report next month. That's alright, gentlemen?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Prince, any amendments?
I have none sir.
Okay. We'll move on. Approval of the minutes? I don't believe we have any.
Okay.
Commissioner Items? Commissioner Canada, would you like to begin?
You know, a lot happened. I did get a confirmation from RJ. They'll be here on the 6th at 1:00 to talk to everybody.
Okay, good. Commissioner Prince?
I really haven't done a whole lot in the last couple of days, except I did put together a proposed committee and my task if both of you are okay with it, to meet for the discussion of the ambulance with the medical facility. I was thinking of keeping it real small, and what I have is, the people I'd like to ask for your permission to have on the committee is two people from Mike Halpin and Carol Veyhinger, and then Alyssa Livengood for the health portion of it, and me. So just four people. And my plan was we would need within the next week or so, so that I could get them up to speed on where we are and how we got to the point we are right now, and then see, once they're up to speed, probably just get a meeting with our colonists through and set up a meeting where we could just start discussions about what the issues are and how we can come up with a reasonable solution, and certainly won't make any decisions, of course, about the full BOCC.
Who's the Wetmore lady?
I'm sorry, sir.
Who's the gal from Wetmore?
Carol.
Carol Veyhinger.
Spell it.
V-A-Y.
H-I-N-G-E-R. She was a county commissioner, and I don't remember what county.
Tellur, Cal.
Tellur.
Tellur. She came up here for the meeting, very involved. She and I spoke after, and I thought, you know what, this is someone who's got a good head on her shoulders. I think she'd be an excellent person to be reasonable there.
I'm assuming we need a motion to appoint?
Oh, do we?
Let me, I got a question. Here Bernard.
Yes sir.
I would think we do, but...
Something, so see you.
I move to appoint the Mike Halpin, Alyssa Livengood, and Carol Veyhinger to the Work Committee for the...
I'll second. As soon as you get, as soon as you finish saying what the motion is, I'll second.
They're moving second to appoint those three people to the EMS Work Committee with the clinic discussion.
Yeah, I have, I would still like to add one more, Jay, and I would like to see it from the hospital district's citizen, and I'd like to nominate Linda Washington to do that. Because the ultimate solution involves not just the Wetmore people, it involves the big picture. And I know that both Mike Halpin and Carol would be great, and you've got a big perspective as well, but I think we need to add that other person.
What, just from my own knowledge, what does Linda bring to the table?
Citizen that actually cares about the county and has a lot of experience. She's a firefighter from the past, knows emergency services forwards and backwards, and has the interest of... In the end, I really think that the ultimate solution has to involve more than just adding the citizens to Wetmore, and it might involve, if we look at the budget, breaking down that hospital budget, and also could impact the mill levy on the emergency services, either a plus or minus across the whole county, meaning the hospital district and the emergency services district.
Does she live in Wetmore?
Lives in the valley.
Okay. You know, I'd be happy to talk to her.
Talk to her.
The one thing I was, and I talked to Mike Halpin about this also, we really don't want to get it too big.
No, I agree.
Because it's a small group, we can get, you know, a consensus with us, and then have a united front with the hospital district. And I don't see this as adversarial at all.
No, I don't either.
I see this as working out a solution.
I do too. And that's why you need a variety of input from different perspectives, so you get a better option.
I'll be happy to talk to her if you don't mind.
So, we want to wait on the vote?
Do you want to wait until we talk to her, or do you want to talk to these other people?
She'd be a very good choice.
These folks are fine. You know, if you feel that we need another person and someone up here, I...
Other people know, Jackie just pointed that in.
Yeah, so if you'll ask her to call Jay and...
Yeah, ask her to call me, we'll put the vote off.
Just do that. Because I think it's worthwhile, I guess, making sure we cover everybody's perspective.
We can always add.
No problem.
Further discussion? Hearing number two to vote? All in favor of approving these three people? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay?
Yep, and we'll go with four, right? You said three, it's four.
Well, there's three right here. The motion was to accept these, or point these three.
Well, the four with Jay.
And I'll come back and ask you...
Okay, and then we'll vote on it.
Once I speak to her, you know.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Is that Carol's last name all the time?
Yes.
V-A-Y.
I asked her to marry someone with the name Smith, but she ignored me.
I'm willing.
Yeah, that's right.
There you go.
There goes Clint again. Who woke him up?
So, the only thing I would have to report, I spoke with Ivan Mars.
Is that what it was?
We're going to buy a handicap van accessible signed base. We have two of them, but we need three. He thought it would be about $150, so I just told him to go ahead and deal with that. And then we also need to get a new scale digital readout. That one's fading by the day. They no longer manufacture it or any parts for it. It went obsolete in the 90s, so I told him to go ahead and get something started on that as well. He talked to the company, he thought...
Who, he?
Ivan Mars.
Oh, Ivan did.
He thought the piece of equipment and then integrating it into the scale would be about $1,400, so...
What is it?
The digital scale readout.
Just screw it up.
Yeah. So, we can't really afford to have that, just crap the bed and then spend two or three weeks trying to get it back up and running, so...
Is that a cowboy term?
Crap the bed is, yes.
Sort of like getting down to the...
Can we move on, gentlemen?
I got, one thing I did, since we're still on the Commissioner Items.
Yes sir.
I have been fielding a bunch of complaints on the tower.
Okay.
And so I thought maybe we ought to discuss PR on it here and publishing why it's here, because every time I answer the question, you know, "It's emergency services, it's for the good, blah blah," and we, you know, it is a big, high flagpole out there, and everybody who wants the quaint look of the cute little town, you see this spike. And there's a good reason for it, so we ought to maybe consider putting an article on it or something from the county and talk about what it is, because...
Ask the media to explain.
And it happened so fast, I mean, it was a one-day construction.
Well, if they've been keeping up, they already know that. And so the question is, do these people read the papers?
No, and in fact, when you say, "Hey, emergency services," they skip to the next article, but until they, and you know what, actually, I didn't realize how tall, I knew it was going to be tall, but because there's nothing else other than 30 feet tall out there, it really shat me.
But I tell people, I've had, I told them it's going to be wonderful when we get the Christmas lights hanging down.
Yeah, you can string a tinsel on it.
Well, I think writing a press release certainly would be...
Makes good idea.
Yeah. And put it in the both pages.
Put it on the county website too.
Yeah.
Because not everybody gets papers.
So, who wants to write it? I can ask Joanne to help on that.
I'll go back and write it. I'll get the contract out.
Yeah, you got the data. It's a good idea.
And they're supposed to give better service to, for AT&T customers too, right?
I don't know about that, because it's not a commercial town.
That was part of the discussion, but I don't think that was a guarantee.
I mean, they could hang a horn on there and help, but I don't know if that's the plan, and...
It's really for emergency services.
Yeah, it's what it was built for. I don't know. That's a good question.
And I agree, it's not the most likely thing you've ever seen.
I believe they said that.
Didn't they?
Health and safety comes first.
Yeah, they did. It improved self-harm service, yeah.
If it does that, it'll be a miracle.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen?
I'm not finished.
Okay. I don't know why I don't have the date of the next Upper Arc meeting. I'm going to research it right now. I know they meet on a certain day every month. I just didn't go back in my calendar and...
Day of the week, day of the week.
Yeah, day of the, day of the month. I think it's the 3rd Thursday, but...
It's the 26th of September, no, the 19th of September of the year.
Oh, you're waiting, pulling it up. I still have a call. Skanga got back, I think, from Italy, and I got to call him today to set up a Blue Line Committee meeting with us. Us, meaning the county.
I hope you have better luck than one of the board members that requested it. Mike Shields requested the committee look to getting together, and Skanga told him it was none of his concern, that everything needed to go through the manager's office, that he was not to be contacting other people in the...
Did he bring it in the meeting or something?
Pardon?
That's kind of crazy. Why, didn't he bring it up in the meeting with him or something?
He just sent an email asking all the members of the Blue Line Expansion Committee if they could get together, so...
That's weird.
Yes, it was very weird, and I think I will probably address that at the next...
Well, as soon as I find out if and when, I'll put an email out to the Wet Mountain Valley Water Association.
Let's see there...
And all the people that have filed.
Yeah, I was looking for...
I had that.
August meeting.
Turns out it wasn't my email address that was the bug, it was the computer got a bug.
That's weird. Oh, they have on the 8th of August, so it's the 2nd.
So it sent to her just one after another.
Of this evening?
Yeah. If you've ever sent it to last after I hit a certain...
It should be the 12th, correct.
They told me after a certain combination.
Well, they're just going off of the 8th, and I don't see it on their website.
Oh, I do have it on the 12th. Yeah, I have it September 12th at 12. I always say 12:30, I don't ask the... Yeah, I have it on the 12th on the calendar.
Should be 1:00, yeah.
Yeah. They have that executive thing ahead of time, I always go to that. I try.
Well, I think their enterprise starts at 1:00, and then the district meeting follows, but they don't have it on their website. Yes sir.
Yeah, I heard that they're talking about moving the Blue Line.
I haven't heard anything from Upper Arcs.
Some homeowners on the east side want water so they can have a yard and this and that together. You know, my personal opinion is they should have picked a better spot to live, if that's what they wanted.
It's true.
You know, because I live in Bloomingdale, we're augmenting, so we've already got an augmentation point. These other people, you know, if you wanted a yard and all this other stuff, want to be able to wash your car away, you know?
Should have thought of it.
You can't pump water uphill.
Well, they can't modify the Blue Line without changing the whole filing, so that would be not true.
Well, that's good, but I just heard that, and I just wanted to see.
They can apply for it, they could ask, but they can't. They could go ask, but that means that they'd have to redo everything, so...
Okay, that's all the question I had.
Okay, thank you sir.
I got to go to work.
There you go.
Have a good day, man.
Yep.
Okay, Attorney Items?
I wrote a couple of letters for Jackie Hobby for the suspected scofflaws out there who aren't following the zoning resolution.
Okay.
She's got a bunch of things on, she's on the agenda today.
No, don't.
This one is inter, I got an email from Donna this morning, the Canyon City Policeman, Police Department Weekly, it's a warrant list, and here's Mark Howard.
List it on there, huh?
Yeah, he says multiple warrants, multiple active warrants, $1,500 total in bonds. I talked to Mike about it just before the meeting, and he checked, and said Mr. Howard's actually been arrested, scheduled to appear in court in Canyon City today.
You know why they didn't find out that was sooner, Jay?
Pardon?
I wonder why that didn't come out sooner?
I...
Unless they just happened over the weekend.
I, actually Brenda Jackson, I, when I had asked her for some assistance in preparing that lawsuit, I asked her what was going on, and she said he was still harassing people up there, and a local fitness center filed a harassment case, so that's what this one is about, I think.
I don't know.
But he's, you know, still bothering the sheriff up there, but he's leaving us alone right now, which is all that I care about.
Yeah.
And if he's, I guess he got a personal reconnaissance bond unfortunately, because if they made him post a cash bond, he'd still be sitting in jail up there, but I'll monitor that, see what happens with that case. And I guess that's all I have to report.
Admin Assistant?
Copy.
Public Comment?
Cal's gone.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Staff Reports?
Can I, can I have a second here?
Sure.
I forgot one thing. I did get the hay out to the airport, and at the next board meeting, we plan to get the board out there sprinkling seed, or sprinkling the flakes around. Do you want to come out?
The board meeting, the airport board?
Airport Board Meeting.
Yeah, you'll keep us posted, or do you have a date?
No, just the...
Thursday.
Next week. During the regular board meeting.
Right after the meeting. We've got everything.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on. Staff Reports?
Where you been?
Good morning.
There is a name for this landfill, I can't pronounce it.
Morning.
Kelly.
Rusty.
How are you, buddy?
Good.
Good. Been beat to death?
Yeah.
That scrape about to get you down?
Not much my guts can take it.
Yeah.
How's your kidneys feeling?
Well, thanks for sending us your report, appreciate that.
They'll come and get it probably Friday. Thursday will be my last day.
Boys want to scoot that way about two inches, because I'm...
Yep.
Going off the table here. That's good. That's good, thanks.
So, you're going to come pick it up, huh? You about done with it?
Yeah, Thursday will be the last day, so I got three days.
I told Jay this morning, I intended to come out there and look, and I just couldn't get it done, so, did you make it to the end or no? 300 feet?
Yeah, I got 300 feet and a 200-foot ramp going out right now, so I'll keep working the next three days, I'll just keep working west.
How does that happen when you get to the end? You have to leave a certain distance for the ramp, huh? And you don't just...
Yeah, because trash trucks and whatnot have a hard time going out if it's too steep.
Okay, good. Good, Golda wants to meet.
Yeah, we have to use that clay material to cover the pits with four feet of material, four feet of clay on these pits when we're closing them or capping them. Inside of a stockpile of clay over there, they just have to come up and test it and make sure that it's okay. It's not too sandy or too gravelly or whatever.
Where'd you get it?
What's that?
Where'd you dig it up?
Comes off of a...
Off the same, same area, and it's got nothing there?
Yeah, they have about two feet of topsoil and then about the same clay.
Really?
Iconic clay anyway. But that's the material that we have to use to cap those pits with, so they'll come up and test that.
So, we need to set a date to meet with CDPHE and Golda?
Yeah, and I called them. I called CDPHE and Golda, and they both said that, come up with a date, and they'll be happy to come to West Cliff.
Nice. You have a date in mind?
Did it track you for that?
Doesn't matter to me. I don't know about Gold or about the state, I don't think well.
11th of September, Wednesday?
I know that Jill from CDPHE is going to the conference in the Springs, and I think that's the last week of September.
Well, how about, we shoot them a couple of dates, gentlemen? What's your calendar look like? 11th would be good for me. The last full week I'm gone.
11th looks good for me.
Let me look.
If we get into October, it'll have to be after the budget hearings, which end on the 18th. So, maybe the 21st? Oh no, you're closed on Monday, that's right.
Right.
22nd in the morning?
Then I could go out on that Monday. Once closed, that wouldn't be a bad thing.
Monday which?
21st of October.
That works.
So how about September 11th? Is a possible date? October 21?
Either one works.
Either one. I'd rather do October personally.
October 22 in the morning, we have CES meeting in the afternoon.
Yeah, it had to be better, kill two birds with one stone. For me.
And then, it gets a little dicey after that. 23rd in the afternoon, we're here, we have a Wetmore board meeting. So you want to jot down, October 21?
That's good to me.
October 22 AM?
So we calling it a landfill?
CDPHE, Golda Associates. And then 22 in the morning? October 21 could be any time during the day. And then October 22 is in the morning, AM. Holler, gentlemen, if you have any issues, October 23 in the afternoon. I'll be Jewish, because we'll be in Wetmore.
I'd do it, that's fine.
I hate to be rushed out on this day off, but I mean, 21st looks good to me.
Yeah.
So 21st, that's a Monday?
That'd be the prime, yeah.
Is that okay?
That would be fine.
What time do you want to do it?
Well, you'll have to get a hold of, they're going to travel down here, right?
Right.
So I'd say probably 10:00, 11:00, yeah.
I imagine right in there somewhere.
Okay. So you'll shoot those possible dates to them and let us know what they think.
Okay, so October...
Golda?
G-O-L-D-E-R.
21st at 2:00, is that what we said?
The engineers, yep, company handling the expansion of the...
21st is Monday, and they said morning?
They said morning.
On the 21st, any time would work. 22nd needs to be morning.
Oh, okay.
And Golda on...
So Monday, Monday the 21st sounds good to me.
To me, it'd be better than the 11th of September.
And what time do we want to do it?
Well, let's talk to them and see what they want to do.
Want to give them a window?
Yeah, I'll let you know, I'll let you know what time they can be here if that works out for both of them.
Since they're driving down here, time doesn't matter to me. If they want to do it in the afternoon, that's fine too.
Okay.
Day, whatever.
And what are you meeting with them for?
Expansion.
Location's going to be out there here.
I think we could probably come in here.
Okay. You set it up and let us know, that'd be great.
Then if they want to go look, we could go look at it, but...
Okay.
Hopefully Golda will have a new map of the area and everything updated.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Well, yeah, if you can get that set up.
So 21st.
21st would be, I guess, our first priority, yeah.
Okay.
They may not be able to do it either, so we'll just...
Right.
Have to see.
Okay.
Okay, good. Are you going to budget for the balance of the skid steer, or do we need to do that?
Donna said that that's going to come out of capital improvement anyway.
Okay, so you don't need to bother with it.
And so she just write a check and then...
Easy for you to say.
Yeah.
Same, same exact machine?
It's a little bit different, not much. A little bit different. Because he's gonna, he's ordering it to make it cheaper for us, so there's a few options So there's a few options that we're not gonna have, which we don't need anyway. I just need it to go up and down.
To get rid of the TV and the stair, and the, uh, air conditioner?
It'll have AC.
Oh, really?
Not gonna mix that, huh? Can have air conditioning, just don't put a cab on it.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyway, he said it'd be probably about sixty days if we order it now. So is that a go on that?
Yep, I think so, don't you? I mean, money's been earmarked and approved, so we need to get that money spent.
Okay.
And that was a CDPHE grant, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So let's try to get that money expended before the end of the year for sure. Okay?
You say it was Four Rivers?
Yeah, John Deere, Four Rivers over, over west.
They're good outfits.
Not going to shine.
That other machine would've been nice, but they sold it, so.
Yeah.
Darn those guys.
Okay, what else, sir?
Think that'll do it, I don't wanna go back at it.
Bring a bag of money today or not?
No, we were closed Saturday, so I have to keep it over there until tomorrow, so we have change for these hundred dollar bills that come in.
Always like to see you coming around with a bag of money. All right, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Have a great day.
You betcha. Thank you. Kelly.
Kelly, Rusty. We like to get right to the point, don't we? All right.
Next victim.
Road and Bridge, right on the timeframe this morning, that's highly unusual, good morning, sir.
What's that all about, huh?
We're unpassionably a little early, so.
Don't, don't, Tom, just cuz the schedule says waste the whole morning, but don't. If he's here early.
He's here right on time.
Yeah, he is.
He sent out a new. DHS there. How things?
Pretty good. Could use some rain.
Yeah, probably ready now. I think most people are done hand, not everybody, but. You want good or bad first?
Well, go ahead, bad. I wanna see things go uphill.
We start at the bottom, we're gonna go one direction, Pines Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh my god, the worst I've ever seen it.
Really?
Yeah, it's brutal.
Had a lady complaining to me about it, but this was the strangest thing. She came to me and said, I really need help with Pines Road and I'm writing it down. Cuz I would've called her and said, could you try and take a look? And she says, but I wanna tell you, they've been working on it the last two days. I said, well ma'am, why are you complaining?
No, unless that's been a while, but.
It's been about two weeks.
Okay, yeah. I was on it the last three days and it is.
Well, we're a guy short today, otherwise we'd have been working on it, so.
It's gonna dry down a little bit, too.
He'll be back in the morning and we should be able to get on it.
I mean, I get, you know, the standard horseboard thing. I understand that, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, we've had to neglect it so we could work on culverts. It's kind of a. Neglect, give up on culverts or, you know.
Well, I had a couple of phone calls on it, but again, like I say, I was on it myself and, uh.
Pretty odd, even.
Man, from Kettle Lane down to Camper's House is almost impassable, yeah. Five mile an hour, just tear your vehicle apart. And there's no escaping it. Typically, you can slide over a little bit, but this is from road edge to road edge, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's one of those where we're gonna have to probably look seriously about putting some mag on next year. The materials just shot. Last time Scott laid it, he, I mean, he cut, he cut, he cut. Several times to get to the bottom of the horseboards and he had it great for a while, but then, I mean, when it goes bad, it goes bad.
You know, I still, I still go back to those sections of Kettle Lane that you mag chlorided for the detour.
Yeah.
Or still, you can tell, you can see them from a half a mile away. You go, oh yeah, that is mag chloride, it's darker in color, it's absorbing that moisture. And I think the road's holding up too.
I think busting it up is the water that pushed it up a little bit. And that complaint on Oak Circle or whatever it is, it's. Past the airport, past the old golf course before you get to the end of the pavement. There's a turnoff to go behind there, Old Domingo area.
Oh, yeah.
Oak Grove.
Oak Grove.
Yeah.
And I was on it a couple of times looking at it too.
Horseboarded it.
Like he's saying this one.
Yeah.
Have to care.
Yeah. Hopefully we'll get on that one pretty soon. I know priorities to get on, on Pines for sure. And I know Scott's working on it. They did one ninety-eight, they're on one ninety-one. They should be on Verdymont. If not today, maybe tomorrow and then Pines, I'll have another guy to get on.
Do they go through the top of Verdymont or not? Up to the cattle guards or?
Actually, it's beyond the cattle guard where our maintenance ends. It's beyond the cattle guard, through the trees, another eighth of a mile.
That's where all the road ends, then it becomes subdive after that.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I was hoping to, you know, and that's one of them deals where we, we don't wanna just do kind of a hit and miss on these other roads. We're fixing them right, so. But, yeah, I bet Pines we can be on tomorrow, so hopefully we help them people out.
Yeah, it's.
It's not.
Anyway, all right, sir, what else?
Uh, we're getting low on.
Now, that's our off.
It's part of it. So we're getting low on gravel out here in our pit, so I need to get this published pretty soon in the paper. It's got the dates and everything on it. We're gonna have to, we had, uh, gravel crushed a couple of years ago and. We only did like thirty or, well, about thirty-five thousand ton. In the past, when they've done it, they've done almost double that. It's lasted about four years. Since we did half the amount, it's lasted a couple of years. We're gonna have to have it done here in the next several months again, so.
Gee, I thought it was, uh, I thought we just did it last year.
No, it was a year before.
I haven't been down into the pit, but I thought I saw a bunch of crushing equipment coming up to the U L A pit.
Oh, yeah, I talked to, uh, Colorado crushers out of. But they're, they're in the area doing some stuff at Kent Beach for the next four or five weeks.
Any chance we could be big tail on them while they're up here or totally different operation?
No, cuz, uh, we're not ready to crush. We gotta get a bunch pushed up in a big pile first.
We gotta go to bid anyway.
Yeah, so it would've been nice if that would've worked out since they were already in the area. They would've probably submitted a pretty decent bid since, uh, they weren't having to mobilize to this area, but.
So you're going to the pit next to the L A pit?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna have to get a guy in a dozer pretty quick and get some pushed up, so, all right.
Love it. Okay.
You done stacking hay?
Yep.
He's got the time.
What would you anticipate for some project my business, I mean, is that on ten thousand dollars, probably five thousand?
No, it's nearly a hundred thousand.
Budgeted?
For next year, that's part of, part of, one of the items I had submitted for. Yeah, they charge nearly three dollars a ton to crush that stuff, so. I think last time it was like two dollars and sixty-five cents or something, so it's kinda pricey, but it's material we gotta have. Of course, everything in the road and bridge department business is pricey.
How did the, uh, how did it lay down?
It, uh, actually had more rock in it than I wished it did. I wish we could separate some more of that rock out of it when it gets crushed. I'm gonna talk to crushers about that, cuz too much gravel in that stuff is not a good thing, cuz that comes to the surface and then the tires.
Tires, just push it up.
Well, yeah, that's what causes some, some of the wash boarding, is too much gravel and it deteriorates the surface of the road. It's almost like an abrasive. So a little less gravel would be kinda nice.
Uh, and you wanna open bids on the first of October?
Yeah, that's our next, um, department head meeting.
And then, uh. And then you would crush after the first of the year?
No, if, if we can get the stuff pushed up, just soon do it before the end of the year. So that it can set through the winter and let the snow melt into it and give it moisture for putting on the roads. That works out real well, so.
But you're not budgeted for it this year?
No, it would, it would get paid for and add a next year's budget.
Oh, okay. They'd be all right with that?
Yeah.
Uh, R B office at Centurytell dot net, huh?
Road and Bridge Office.
Wow, wonder why that is.
I don't know.
Ours were, used to be Centurytell. I'm surprised he hasn't switched you over.
Yeah, I am too.
What, uh?
Should be Custer County Gov dot com, I would've expected, but.
R B office, like at Custer County Gov? I might have to talk to him about that.
I don't know how.
We're still giving.
Mess you up, you got a lot of mail on there.
Well, we just have to change it on the, on the county.
Yeah, you might wanna, cuz remember he talked the other day about changing everybody again to a dot gov instead of a dot com? So, um.
Yeah, we want some security protocols, so. This might be a time to do it, but no, it's a big deal. Just was surprised when I saw that. Well, um. I would guess we probably need a motion to authorize this.
I am a, that we, uh, you know, how do you, you wanna?
Well.
Well, we're gonna do it before it's.
I don't know that we'd actually, I don't know if I need a.
I don't think we need it, I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, it's just something, and we didn't do it last time either. We just, I just.
It's in your budget.
Yeah.
And you got it handled.
Twenty twenty, and we're doing it in twenty nineteen.
Okay, in that case. Then I would say we need a motion.
So, uh, all right, so I move we go ahead and letting spend that money to do that and pay for it out of next year's budget. That's what his plan is.
So, I'll go ahead and second it for discussion purposes. Okay, uh. I was thinking about posting this, but if it's the money thing, it's been moved and seconded that we authorize Gary to spend the money to post. Uh, thirty-five thousand tons of three-quarter minus crushed, discussion?
So the anticipation would be you pay the bill in twenty twenty, once the budget's approved?
Yes.
Would you have it in your budget for two thousand nineteen?
No, I don't have it in twenty twenty.
That's what I'm thinking, that's why I'm asking. So whoever you made this agreement with, you would ask, notify them that they get paid in January?
Yeah, and, and there's a high, you know, there's a strong possibility because of the workload, they might not be able to crush.
I don't get to it till November anyway.
Yeah, November and then by the time, it, and it's.
Submit their bill.
It usually takes them about four weeks to get it crushed, so by the time we get this and it's a month later and then.
It's smart move.
I just don't wanna have someone anticipating our check arriving and say, oh, we gotta wait three more weeks or a month or whatever.
But you'll have a conversation with them.
Absolutely.
Okay, further discussion?
Technically, you're committing a future board for an obligation. So I guess this is conditional upon the money being budgeted, this motion for twenty twenty.
Well, that's, uh, what do you normally do in that case? You always budget money for the, right, per normal process? Care, you carry it. But we, he's right, we gotta make sure.
We don't have the money until we budget it.
Right, and so, well, the only reason I bring it up, making sure everybody's comfortable that that is the process and not, you know, that we will address it in that year.
Well, it puts, it puts the burden on us that we must approve.
That's right.
The budget since we're agreeing to it today.
Right.
So I think council's point is well taken, yeah.
I agree.
Now, the other safety net here is that we're talking about an account, uh, dedicated funds. If worse come to worse, he'd have to shuffle within his own budget around to make room for this.
Which is what happens in emergency thing.
So.
Yeah, we could do a supplement or something of that nature, because the funds are there in excess of what we need. We just do a supplement, kinda like what we did with mag chloride, is what we did this year.
Okay, further discussion? Here we now proceed to vote. All in favor of authorizing expenditure for thirty-five thousand tons of three-quarter inch minus rock crushed, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posey? Carrie's, okay? Supa?
And I got this a couple of weeks ago. U T F had some surplus funds that they distributed again. We got a similar amount last year, so. And I've talked to Donna in both Virginia about making a separate account to put that in so that it's easier to get our hands on safer. It would be outside of our normal budget, so that something come up, you know.
Yeah, H U T F sent those figures out preliminary figures anyway, so.
So it can be used for anything in your butt, in your.
In the.
Line.
Yeah, within the road and bridge department.
Right.
You know, outside of an addition.
Pretty nice chunk of change.
Yeah, considering the cost of everything. I mean, you know what, later on, we do wanna buy a chip seal machine. Funds could be used for.
Mag chloride.
Or mag, yeah, sure.
So for the record, H U T F's three hundred and eighty-six thousand, roughly. Okay, good, that helps.
There's more to your story?
Well, always. Last year, we bought our rock from Mike Tezak. Tezak's down here on Highway fifty. And, uh, he's got a, he's got a lot of that rock left and I'm thinking for the future, since it's a close haul. It'd probably be wise to go ahead and buy another like twenty or two thousand or three thousand ton of that stuff, so.
What size?
It's five eighths minus is what it is, but it's real good clean rock. It's the rock we use this year and it worked really nice, so. We don't always have the luxury of getting our rock close like that, so while it's available, I think. And I think I've got it in the budget to be able to get some picked up before the end of the year and pay for it, so.
Good.
If you see a bill come through for thirty thousand dollars for rock, that's what it's gonna be.
If you feel it's appropriate, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think it's wise to get it stockpiled while it's available in a close location like that, so.
That's the same stuff you use on the chip seal, correct?
Yeah.
How you tracking on your budget?
How do I track it?
No, no. How are you doing with the budget? Are you?
We.
At where you thought it would be and?
We were actually.
Pension, you're gonna have enough?
No, we're gonna have enough by, by, uh, by around forty-five thousand dollars, so.
Cuz in theory, you, you might be able to pay for the gravel if you're not spending it all. The idea is to spend it all for what it's for.
Yeah, so what I do is I take a spreadsheet like this and I've got the months that we've, we've already gone through this year. And then I do an average on each line item and then each of the four remaining months, I put down what that average is. And it gives me a projected imbalance at the end of the year. And then right now, we're looking at, uh. A surplus or a balance at the end of the year of, uh, fifty-three thousand.
Seeing there's the.
So if I spend thirty on the rock, I'll still have a projected balance in excess of twenty, so.
That's the way it should be.
Yeah, I don't wanna go over.
Well, and we don't wanna be banking it and not spending it for what it was out.
No, exactly, and that's why I'm thinking if I can buy an item like this rock and use it for the future, it'd be a good thing to spend some excess money for, so.
Good.
You got some new hires, huh?
Yes, one's gonna start the morning and the other one started last week, so.
How many guys put their hat in the ring when you advertise it?
Not very many.
Really?
I've recently had two applications come in, but prior to that, just a couple.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know, our, um, our. The people we got to select from up in here, this area that's, uh, you know, submit applications is just not very many.
Cuz they're not experienced enough yet?
No, they're just, well, I mean, I think, I don't know, I don't know what it is. I just, our workforce up here is pretty limited. I know I've, I've talked to people that are trying to find contract labor where they're gonna pay cash at twenty bucks an hour and they can't get anybody to go to work.
Well, appreciate you keeping us informed. Be an email about your staffing issue that helps us, helps me for sure.
Yeah, sure. And I do anticipate, there's possibility, there, we do have one good applicant that I'm looking at. And because of Roger retiring at the end of the year, I may put one more on. If the right applicant comes along and then. If someone in-house does end up at that position, I've got somebody already in place that I can use right now, that would take. Another individual's place that might move up potentially, so.
Um, I think it'd be appropriate to have this conversation. You and I talked a little bit about the process of. Hiring, uh. If and when Roger retires, or giving that some thought. I spoke to a couple of county department heads. Uh, one in the county, one out of the county, and they, I thought came up, both of them came up with the same suggestion. I wanna offer that up to you. Is maybe putting together a search committee of, uh. Neighboring county road and bridge supervisors. And have them come in and go through the process and then make a recommendation to you.
They would be willing to do that then, huh?
I think so.
To do what?
So they would like sit in on the interview?
They would come in and, I'm, I'm, I'm shooting from the hip here, but. Yeah, they would come in and be your committee, your search committee.
Well, I, I kinda like that in some ways. I mean, that way it's.
We wanna advertise more than just in the county for some people to help, right? You could bring some family in here if they wanted to move if the job was right.
Well, yeah, we're telling that to search committee itself.
I know you are, but that, but that search committee would know their people, right? Neither know their area.
But they, like I say, they basically serve as an interview.
You're right.
Committee and.
Make a recommendation.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
So.
But we need good applicants somewhere to make it worthwhile. You need to advertise it and get.
Yeah, yeah, and it probably ought to be done fairly soon because we've only got four and a half months and Roger's gonna be done, so.
Right.
He'll work through the end of the payday.
Give them a chance to look at this valley before the snow gets here.
Sure.
Yeah, so I would maybe suggest reaching out to some local or. Neighboring supervisor and ask them if they'd be willing to.
Okay.
Do that.
I wonder how many individuals we're thinking of?
I'd say three or four.
Okay.
Just, I'm not missing something? Did, did he announce retirement? At the end of the year?
He'll work through the, um, the pay period in January and then he's done. His last paycheck.
So you'd like to have somebody overlap, well, it doesn't overlap necessarily, just getting somebody to come in and start at a lower level doing something, right?
A replacement.
Well, we're gonna have to replace.
Right, well, sure you do, but you take that from a guy that's theoretically in your. Or, or a guy that's qualified to compete against whoever you've got that might be interested, low in your workforce now.
Yeah, I, what was talked about was advertising outside of the county, in case there's somebody interested. It's got the qualifications outside of the road and bridge department currently.
Yeah.
Course, open it up to anyone.
And that's why, you know, that's a good thing to tell the other supervisors when you're asking to interview, maybe there's somebody they can recommend. Get the word out.
Uh, would you write up a vacancy announcement for that position and then we can? Uh, would you write up a vacancy announcement for that position, and we can get moving forward on that? Get it on our website, of course, and then I don't know if there's a trade magazine or a trade periodical that we could put it in, or. I mean, you've got the Colorado Association of Road and Bridge Supervisors, right, or whatever that's. I don't know.
Yeah, I'll work on something.
I thought it was a good recommendation that they came to me with, I thought, wow, yeah, makes sense. So they'd certainly know what qualifications they should be looking for, I would think. And then we don't get mired down into local politics.
Yeah, that's one I'm hoping to avoid.
Yeah. Uh, if you need some help with that, as commissioners, I think we could also reach out to those supervisors or assistant supervisors. In neighboring counties, but.
Alright.
I would say, I think it'd be appropriate for you to take the lead, and if you want us to follow up or whatever, we sure could.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah.
Mr. Prince?
Sure.
Good. Anything else?
Uh, we've got these uh, these bids for the surplus equipment, we got.
Oh, you did get some?
Yeah, a couple, not a lot.
Counselor, gonna earn his pay today. Uh, surplus road and bridge equipment, we put out a request for bid.
You got the official opener?
I got it, it's the official opener.
Yeah, we don't, we prefer him to use this kind, cause it's a little safer, but. Jackie and Gary are the only ones really at risk, poke you in the eye with that letter opener.
This one's from Mountain Valley Excavating, received Friday, August thirtieth.
And these are all within the deadline, right?
Mountain Valley Excavating, Ed Lyons, address phone number, et cetera, dated August thirty, twenty nineteen. Submitting bid to Custicante Road and Bridge Department, surplus items for sale. Item number one, nineteen eighty-eight Peterbilt tractor, model three seventy-seven, bid price thirty-five hundred dollars. Three thousand five hundred dollars. Item number four, nineteen sixty-seven Coleman Screen at the AP Screen Plant. And model two oh two with a Ford one seventy-two industrial gas engine. Bid price three thousand five hundred dollars. Item number five, two thousand one, BAC three by sixty stacker. I mean, this is all foreign language to me, V I M Motor Detroit, two-cylinder air-cooled diesel engine, bid price four thousand dollars.
Conveyor belt, basically.
Okay.
Stacks it.
Those were the three items, or there's others? That's just the three he chose to bid on, would you guess?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a bid for the nineteen eighty-five Ford F two fifty from Chris Halpin. This is a bid offering for a nineteen eighty-five Ford F two fifty, the bid will be four hundred fifty dollars. That's the bid for Chris Halpin for that item.
Pardon?
Does it run?
Yeah, it runs, it just needs a TLC. It'll make somebody a good unit, but just not us.
And finally, I'm bid from Rick Squire, dated August twenty-nine. Bid on item number one, nineteen eighty-eight Peterbilt tractor, model three seven seven, three thousand five hundred dollars.
Three thousand what?
Three thousand five hundred dollars.
What do we do with a tie? How do you break it? Toilet? Cut it in half?
I have to tell them that there's another bid, the same amount, and see if either one of them wants to bid more than that. Would be the way to handle this, those are the only two bids on that particular item.
Let's finish up before we.
Okay, and that's.
Down, unless that's it.
That's, yeah, those are the three bids we have here.
And the, the last bid for that pickup, it was how much, Chris?
Four hundred fifty dollars.
And then, and that was from who?
Chris Halpin.
Oh.
Crizell.
And then somebody else bid on it?
Nope.
No, nobody else bid on it.
Oh, it's just the only one?
They had a Peterbilt, it was the only one, no, they had multiple bids.
Wasn't bid on, I was wondering.
Uh, just a tire um, balancer.
That was it?
Yeah.
What do you feel about the pickup? Let's start with that.
Uh, it sounds fair to me.
Based on his recommendation, I would move that we award the bid to Chris Halpin for the nineteen eighty-five F two fifty for four hundred fifty bucks. Moving second into left bid for the pickup, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Sorry, discussion, sorry, 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 all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posey? Carries?
You weren't referred to the bid from Ed Lyons on the other two, there weren't any other competitive bids for those other two there.
Sixty-seventh Coleman uh, screen.
Four and five that Ed Lyons bid.
Yeah, four and five his bid. I believe we accept that bid.
Which one was that?
Both bids on four and five for Ed Lyons.
The screener and the?
Screener and the stacker.
And they were how much again?
Thirty-five or four.
Three hundred and four thousand, thirty-five hundred on the screening plant, four thousand on the stacker.
Yes, that's fair.
I'll second the motion, I missed it.
He didn't.
No, I, I was gonna ask, but I heard you say you think those are reasonable prices?
That's more than I expected, actually.
Yeah, me too.
They moved a second into award the bid price of thirty-five hundred dollars for the screening plant to Ed Lyons along with the stacker. At a bid price of four thousand, all, both those two, Mountain Valley Excavating, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You didn't say aye, you whispered.
Motion carries. Now, to the Peterbilt, eighteen, nineteen eighty-eight Peterbilt. I guess a couple of trains of thought that I had was, and I hesitated on the whole deal. I'm assuming it doesn't matter to Ed that it was a package deal.
I wouldn't.
So, uh, yeah, I think that'd probably be the cleanest way is to contact them both, huh?
And see if either one, just basically tell them it's a tie, don't tell them with who or anything else, and just see if either one of them wants to submit a bid. In writing for additional, maybe one of them says, I don't wanna pay anymore for it.
Yeah, and they both do that, and that's, that's entirely fine too. And just have them submit a, another seal.
Some, just for that one, obviously, yeah.
Just between those two, we don't have to go back to the public.
Right, right.
So, yeah, I, I would guess the other, I interrupted you, sorry, so I knew you wanted to speak. I was gonna say, the other scenario would be to draw a name out of a hat. If they say, no, I wanna stay at thirty-five, and they both say that.
And I think we do flip a coin or draw a name.
Coin, and you might tell them that, that if you both decide to stay at thirty-five hundred, you don't have to tell them what the amount is, but. If neither one of you wanna resubmit, then we will flip a coin or draw a name out of a hat. I, I would think, I don't know how else we can solve that.
Well, the only other way you could do it, to be fair, would be to say, in order, if you do want it, you have to submit a bid for them.
Well, that's what we say.
I know, and so, but if they, if one says, I don't want it, the other one doesn't, does that mean that you automatically get it for the thirty-five hundred?
Well, if one says he doesn't wanna bid anymore.
Well.
Then his thirty-five hundred stands.
And if the other one bids.
For thirty, whatever, over that, then he would get the bid. If they both say, no, I want that to stand, then we'll.
Is that a good price for him? Is that the thirty-five hundred reasonable?
I wouldn't wanna take any less than that, but my thoughts are, if we didn't accept that, then if we wanted to take it to like Richie Brother Auction, for instance. They won't have another Denver auction, probably another year.
And they'll probably get less.
And they may get less, so, no, I think the thirty-five hundred is, is fair, I've, I've uh.
Yeah, I could flip a coin now, I thought about that too, is just making the decision today.
Well, it's maximized, I mean, my suggestion would be a maximize, throw another hundred dollars on the table or something.
You have to do that.
My comment.
Be fair.
I, I'm just a little concerned, do we have a precedent previously set on how we handle a tie bid? And I think we ought to follow whatever has been done in the past, if that's occurred, rather than have a different. I don't want anybody to come back and say, hey, when I did it, we did it a different way, and you like these two people, or whatever, this friendliness, there's some.
Well, I've been a commissioner, so there's no precedence for me.
I've actually sold, I've never had this happen, honestly. In the stuff that I've sold in the past.
Yeah, and we go backwards.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know.
I agree.
I've been doing it five years, I've never had a tie bid before.
Then let's go ahead and open it back up for bids again. I mean, normal auctions, that's what happens if there's a tie, the auctioneer just opens it up again.
Between the two, not opening.
That's right.
Just between the two.
Yeah, I, what I'll do is I'll make contact with them both, and tell them exactly what we discussed.
Yeah.
But it does have to be in writing.
Yes. And they'll have it in writing, if they're interested, and then we just table this until.
Yeah. October first.
So, maybe make it simple too, if it's above, then we've approved it for the thirty-five million dollars, he can accept the high bid.
Well, we'll have to do it in a meeting, right, sealed bid.
I know, but bring it in, well, sure.
To come back in again.
Yeah.
Next month, right?
That's right.
So if you do that forward.
If you wanted to get it on the agenda sooner, I mean, if you get these other sealed bids, we don't.
Yeah, I mean, it could happen pretty quick, we can do it wet more, just let me know, and I'll put it on the agenda.
That'd be nice, if we can get it taken care of.
Okay.
I was just trying to save some time, seems to me he could still accept it for the county. Cause we've authorized it.
Oh, I wondered about contact information.
Oh, yeah, maybe, Karen?
Take much time, I mean.
Can you make, uh, let's see. Copy of the bid that's in here and the copy that's bid in here.
Okay, just one copy?
Yeah, just for Gary.
Okay.
And then I'll get hold of that, and about this other.
And you can let Chris know, he's a winner in the truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say we can notify the successful bids.
Okay, no problem.
Alright, sir, anything else?
That's it.
Ten percent fee off of that talk coming to the commissioners.
The usual.
Alright, sir, the usual, don't give me that. If it were true, I'd go along with it. Alright, sir, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, you bet, thanks for coming in.
We need a break to get a cup of joe.
Do we have some donuts?
No, no donuts, I'm down five pounds. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, could you tolerate about a four-minute break? I know you've been waiting.
Patiently.
With consent, then gentlemen, we'll be in recess for about four minutes. Board of Commissioners meeting will reconvene. Let the time show that, the record show that it is ten oh eight. Good morning, how are you?
Good, did you guys get these?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's it, so, perfect.
Sure did, I can't swear to you that I moved the dashboard to this packet, but.
I'm sorry, what?
Say, I can't swear to you that I moved the dashboard to this packet.
He wears me out. The dashboard, and then they changed it because they didn't want red and green, because green, red looks so bad, and on and on. And they've, and they're changing how they're doing it, and it's, it's like, whatever.
Every page orientation there is possible on the compass, although I haven't seen it left upside down yet. But, oh yeah, there it is, right there.
Yeah.
Old age pension.
It's just.
Not upside down, but oriented to the left. Go ahead, ma'am, how are we?
Oh, nothing.
Oh, nothing.
Oh, nothing, so, I have this page first, you have that, oh, okay, okay, so we're all on the same page. So, um, we're doing okay, we're doing okay, if you look at admin, admin, we're doing fine. We're a little over on our A and D, just because we've had some people move in, but.
Foster care is under?
Foster care is under that, I also.
By half.
Foster care is strange, and in January, I'm gonna change how I do this, cause you guys don't really get a good idea what happens with foster care. Because our out-of-home placements, and um, we're high, because we've had kids in treatment centers and stuff. So, I, but our, we have an allocation, and that's decided by an allocation committee. But they always put money for small counties into a mitigation pool, because they know us picking up like six kids can kill our allocation big time. So, I had to mitigate, and so I mitigated for almost a hundred and thirty thousand to cover that. We got that, and so, it just, it just does not reflect on this. But we did that, and so we're, we're good on that, and so, okay. We also have that for the TANF program, if we go over on that, and, but, we're fine on TANF. So, there's, there's no issue there, and we're fine on daycare and all of that, so we're good to go. And then, old age pension, that's all state, but that just shows you what we've done with that. And it's weird, because it goes up and down, because we move them out of one category to another category, or somebody starts getting social security, which drops their payments. So, we can still have the number, the same number of payments, but the dollar amounts can do different.
Where you drop out.
Where we drop, or you drop out or something, so it makes it look weird.
These payments, your office prints these checks and mails them, or do they come from the state?
No, it, it goes on a card, it, it either goes direct deposit into an account, or it goes onto a card. We used to way back when, we had to hand, we had to handwrite the checks, we don't do that anymore. Yeah, we do have to track, they send out a thing, just so that we can see if people, um, they do one death benefit, if somebody passes away. Just have that, so we can track and see what's going on with them, and make sure everything's fine, but that's just the report we get. LEAK, we don't have anything going on, it will be starting soon, around, it goes to a LEAK training sometime, this sometime in September.
So, nothing in August?
Nothing in August, it won't start up until, uh, you won't see a payment until November. Medicaid transportation, it's up and down, just depending on how many trips that people are making.
And who we using?
And we, we, we use anybody. As long as they have Medicaid, uh, we will reimburse them, we can do private cars, we do home rotary, there's also that, what's that thing? Medi, medi, medi something, medivac, we'll do that, whatever.
Yeah, I saw that up here.
Yeah, we will reimburse.
Okay.
Whatever.
So what's the cap on it, a hundred percent?
Yes, we get it from the state, and it's whatever, we don't.
So you just keep submitting, and you don't know what the limit is?
Nope.
Really?
There's, as far as we know, there's no limit.
Wow.
Yeah, we just, um, it's, it's a, we just submit it, and they reimburse us for it. We, we had trouble with that system where we sent in for the reimbursements last week. She could get four of them in, and then it would go down. And then, she'd wait two or three hours, and she could get another four in, and then it would go down. Then the next day, we went in, and it was fine, and we got them all through, so, systems are weird. And then, um, our C S B G, I didn't have any in the month of July, I have some in August, but they won't show up yet. But we got our allocation on that.
I know, I've asked you this before, generally, what does Colorado State Block Grant pay for?
Uh, it's community service block grant, and we use it for emergencies like ranch utilities, we can do eyeglasses, we can do, um. We can also help sometimes with like, if somebody has a water heater that needs to be replaced, something like that, we can do that. We can do prescriptions if they don't have Medicaid, and they can't afford prescription.
And you do write checks to those?
We do write checks, cause you sign those, yes, we do write checks for those. Energy outreach, I have a little bit of money left in that, not too much, but we're gonna start up again. Uh, submitted the grant, we were awarded, um, money, I go in September for a appetite. We just get together, and they still do not tell me how much money we're gonna get. They don't tell me until I actually get the check, I don't know, it's a big secret.
Been up and down, too, either?
Yeah, it's.
Generally running eight thousand?
Yeah, it's been going down a little bit, and so, they've lowered the amount that we can even pay. Is a maximum amount because they upped the amount of the leap. That's what they did last year, so I don't know what they're going to do this year. I guess I'll, I have to just wait and see.
I talked to some people in Bena Vista. Their average price for propane is a buck thirty-five.
Really?
And we're what? Between fifty-eight and seventy? Dollar fifty-eight, dollar seventy? I don't know. I haven't checked lately.
I don't know. I just talked to Margas in Pueblo, and they told me their propane was a dollar ninety-nine a gallon.
What do we, what did you say in Bena Vista?
A buck thirty-five.
Pretty cheap.
So I don't know. I don't know.
Wonder why.
Yeah, that's pretty good. I don't know why not. Good, good news, huh?
Yeah.
Good news. Um, and then our TFAB. Our TFAB numbers have been down. I think it's summertime. We have people who are working, and we're just not seeing the numbers of TFAB come in. And then we have, we haven't had a whole lot of TFAB food coming in either, so maybe that's going to increase. I'm not sure. Hopefully, that will increase. We will see what happens with that. Let's see, um, yeah, I told you of CSB, or Energy Outreach, I have a meeting for that, so. One of our things that we got going on is in child welfare. We have kids, all the kids that we have in placement have to see, or we acquired, first of all, to see them every month. And the second thing is they have to have visits with the parents, and so we are doing a lot of visits. And so we are, you know, we're having a lot of mileage because we're having to travel. We're also having, we have now kids in Colorado Springs where we have to take, have a visit up in the Springs. So our mileage is, is racking up. So I'm thinking we should be okay, but I'm just wanting on that.
If we were to try to procure a vehicle for DHS, can we get any help from the state?
Here's the thing about that, is that I actually have some money, that would be no county money involved in this at all, to do that. And that's what we're going to, we're really looking at, and I may do it sooner, but because it's not really in my budget to do it this year as far as that. But for next year, for sure. So what we would be doing, insurance, you know, plates, well, I don't know how that goes, but we've been losing.
That might work a deal.
See, and I don't know. You're, you're shady like that. I don't know. You know, but then we would still charge mileage to the state because then that comes, we get, we get some reimbursement back. Fremont County just bought a few vehicles, so I'm going to work with them on how they did that. Because we have to code this off to the state so we can get reimbursed for all of this stuff.
Including the price of the vehicle or no?
No, but there's no county.
State won't help.
But there's no county funds because those funds that I'm going to use to buy that vehicle are funds that come from, um, if we collect child support, well, we have kids in placement, or if we collect, um, well, parental fees, it's almost the same thing. But if it's a two-parent household, we charge them so much to have kids in placement. If it's a one-parent household or two, you know, separated, then we charge each one of them child support for that. And when this started, this years ago, counties that did not have a whole lot going on, our kids in placement, any type, anytime we get any money for that, we get to keep it all. So over the years, it, it's been, and we use it for different things, and it can only be used for, I can't say that with my braces. But certain things, so we're going to stay it that way.
Specific.
Thank you.
Yep.
Things, and it has to be kind of approved. And in one of them, it's for family preservation. And because we are using this vehicle to go do visits, it fits right in there.
So would that be a county-owned vehicle then, or is it going to be?
It'd be a county-owned vehicle. Yes, it would be.
So we need to approve that.
You're going to have to approve that, and so we're going to try to figure out.
Who buys the insurance in, via county policy?
Yeah, I guess so. It would be under the county policy. How you do for like Jackie and JD and all of those. The Sheriff's Department, I guess. It would come underneath that. And so that stuff that I'm going to need to talk to you guys about, how we go about that doing that. I don't know if I just talked to Donna about that. Who I talked to about that? Who does that? Who does that?
Insurance would be Donna. We would end up obviously making a decision to cover that vehicle in our policies. She'd know that's a bolt on it. Um, where's this at on priority scale, one to ten?
We'd like to get it done sooner than later.
This fall?
Just, yeah, just because we're just running up and down the hill all the time.
This fall, get a better mind.
Right, to ask your employees.
And, and sometimes we're having to do multiple visits at the same time. So we've got somebody going over here, and we've got somebody going over here, and they're still going to have that problem, but they're not going to be having to use their vehicles as much.
What kind of vehicle are you looking at? A van, transport?
We're looking at something that can hold six kids. We have six kids right now, and so we're looking at, we had a list. I didn't bring it with me, but.
A Tahoe.
Well, it, we looked at some of them, but Toyota Highlander will hold six, well, I think holds like seven. And then I think Chevy Traverse or something. We have a list, about four of them.
So you're looking at driver plus six passengers?
Right, right.
Would you tip to haul six kids at a time?
Hopefully not, but we.
But if you have a family of six.
But, but we picked up six kids and so.
Family.
In one family. We had this years ago, Linda and I, we picked up six kids, and we had to take them to Pueblo West to a foster home. So you had to take three. I had to take three because we don't have anything that's big enough to hold that. So we're trying to, thinking if we get something big enough, and I mean, if we end up with eight kids, hopefully not, we're going to still have a problem. But we're trying to, we're trying to do more than hold two kids or, you know, so that's what we're, that's why we're looking at bigger kids. I mean, bigger vehicles.
Any special driver's license to haul these?
No, they're just, they're just big SUVs, and no, there's no special driver's license. The insurance may be a little bit more because we're having kids in there, so that's something that I'm going to find out from other counties that have vehicles on what they're doing with that. But Fremont County just did it, so they got a, they got, they bought two or three of them.
Something that could walk overdue for you to.
Yeah, yeah, because we do. We're just, and before it wasn't that big of a deal, but ma'am, we're just, we're on the road constantly.
I'd say we ought to jump on them.
Just this morning, Tish had to go down to Wapmore, pick up the kid, bring it in, to have a visit with dad.
With her own vehicle.
With her own vehicle.
It's almost an unwritten deal. If you're going to hire somebody in your office, they have to have a vehicle. That's all right.
Dad is a mandatory thing that we have to find out. Do you have a vehicle? Do you have insurance on, or, you know, that type of stuff.
And do you reimburse them at the IRS amount fifty-five days?
We, we reimburse them at whatever the county pays. That's what, that's what we reimburse them at.
Okay.
And some of the counties will, you know, some of the counties, even though they have county vehicles, the workers still want to take their own vehicles. And we go, well, whatever, because they want, they want that reimbursement check, not me. I can have another vehicle, and I'm not putting the wear and tear on my car.
Well, I'd say if that county vehicle's available, then that's priority.
It needs, it needs.
Doesn't matter what they want.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Buy a vehicle they need to use.
Oh, no, not our people. Our people are going, you know, get a vehicle if we can. So.
I would follow that.
Okay, yeah, we were working on it, and then kind of everything went to a standstill, but we're going to, we're going to look at these vehicles and see, and decide what we want to do, and check it out. Probably have to get you all approved.
Good year-end deal on last year's model.
Well, see, that's another thing. That's what I thought of too, because they're clearing those old vehicles or the last vehicles out and stuff.
They've had some hailstorms.
And so you can get some deals.
Get some pretty good deals.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll let you know about that.
Obviously, but.
Really?
Yeah.
Sorry, but you have to.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you just, uh, let me know how we do that.
Yeah, well, you come, if you can make a decision on what vehicle you want.
Okay.
Then that tells us what we need to do.
Oh, okay.
And she's not spending county.
I'm not spending county money at all.
No, but it's going to be a county-owned vehicle.
Yeah, but the money.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to ask.
Because you can get, you can get a vehicle gifted, but you don't have to put it out.
Yeah.
But my feeling is, I'm, I'm kind of with Tom. If, if it's going to be vehicle that we're going to ensure, we're going to be the maintenance on it, whether we buy it or not, um, and it.
If somebody wanted to give you one, you wouldn't do it.
Well, yeah, then.
Well, that's what she's doing. It's a different pot of money. It's not, not a county deal.
Let's look into that.
I will. I will find out.
Whatever's appropriate is what we want to do.
Yeah, I will find out from, I'm going to go to the director's meeting, you know, this month.
Good.
And there'll be, there'll be a few of the directors there that have county vehicles, and I will find out what they do and how they do it.
And whatever they do, you know, we'll assume it's correct.
Yeah, and they, and I know like Fremont County, they're not using the pot of money that I have. Uh, they're using, um.
It's like this rainbow coming down, some leprechauns around this pot of money. I guess because I watched Notre Dame football last night.
Uh, but what they have, what they're using is they're charging, they have, they get an allocation, for example, long-term care. And long-term care has to go out and do visits and stuff, and they get money for that. So they're using some of their long-term care money to offset that. See, I don't have that because we don't, our long-term care stuff is handled by Fremont County. So they're using different little pots of money that they're buying these vehicles with. Now me, I just have this month that state-owned, it wasn't state-owned, but it's money. There's no county money in this thing at all. So it's a little bit different, but I will find out.
Okay, and we'll, we'll go along with whatever. I'm just, I'm excited.
But I, but I understand, yeah, but I understand what you're saying still, but I will find out exactly. So it's a little bit different.
Okay.
But, but, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Coming in.
See ya.
Yeah.
Wake you up.
Your expertise.
Maybe wrong, but it was.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
They say hi to.
Next item, VSO. Good morning, sir. How are you? Sorry for the delay.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
How's things going, sir?
Mighty spry today?
Oh, trying. So biggest thing that I did for this month was, uh, last week, four days of, uh, training for the, uh, Colorado Division of Veterans Affairs. Uh, that's their annual training. Uh, I did get my initial, um, certification with them, and I'll be working on the paperwork as far as my accreditation through CDVA. Um, the Veterans Trust Fund distribution has been going on. Uh, we've distributed about five thousand dollars, uh, through August doing pre-bidings for propane and firewood and things like that. Um, as far as some upcoming things, um, the National Commander of the American Legion is coming to West Cliff on October seventh at seven PM at Lang Hall. And I, I'm no longer the commander of the American Legion, but I did ask, um, that Carol Kennedy is commander again.
Again?
Yeah. Um, I did ask that we make the meeting open to all veterans. Uh, there's going to be a dinner beforehand, but the meeting itself will be open to all veterans. Um, and you three, of course, are invited as well. Um, I'm hoping we'll get some good information, not just on, you know, American Legion stuff, but, you know, he has the finger on, uh, veterans issues throughout the country.
October seventh at what time?
Seven PM at Lang Hall.
So potluck or something? How's the meal being?
I want to say they're doing spaghetti or something like that. I haven't followed it too much.
Donations being accepted, that kind of.
Um, I'm not sure on that one. Um, basically, I've kind of just taken a hands-off approach on American Legion.
Because that's Legion doing it, not your office.
Not my office, but I wanted to make sure that it was open to, to all veterans because I think there's going to be some important information. Um.
I will be unavailable.
The Veteran Trust Fund regular distribution is going to start next Monday. Um, we have, I believe, seventy-seven thousand dollars for Custer County, uh, this year. Um, I have gotten a lot of offers for food donations for the dry good, um, food bank that I have downstairs. Um, the question I'd like to ask, I've had an offer for a freezer donated. I don't know if there's any legal issues as far as us giving out frozen food versus dry goods. So if there's no issues, then.
I would just make sure that whatever you give out is not beyond the expiration date on the labels and has them thawed and refrozen. You know, just common sense.
Common sense.
I'm not going to have an issue with it. I don't know about gentlemen here.
Okay, so we'll start working on that, and other than that, I mean, it's just been kind of business as usual as far as, uh, new claims and, and, uh, appeals. But moving forward into the winter, it looks like we're going to be able to help a lot of veterans with the Veterans Trust Fund. It's, it's a good program, and I'm glad the VFW has, has taken lead on that. You know, basically, the only thing my office does is just verification of, of veteran status. And then, uh, as far as the food donations, um, everyone has agreed that if someone comes into my office and they need food.
Go downstairs and get it.
I'll take them downstairs. I may need to put shelves upstairs just because having a disabled veteran walk down the stairs to pick out food is not a good idea. Just want to pull work on that.
I'll go ahead and move that we accept the, uh, the SO report for August two thousand nine.
And I'll second it.
Moving second to accept August VSO report discussion, public comment, hearing, I received a vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fine, I close nate. Who carries?
At this job?
At this job.
Uh, March twelfth.
Thank you. What's the total number of veterans you got?
In my office, there's, I don't have an exact number. I think I counted it one day as far as my actual files, but it was, uh, I think it was three hundred and seventy in my office, but that is not anywhere close to total veterans in this county alone. The problem with the numbers in my office is a lot of them, I do get veterans from other counties coming here. We have Fremont County, their, their VSO is retiring, and, uh, the VFW is trying to take up the slack. So I do get veterans from here. I get them from south. I've even got them from Pueblo. Um, a lot of the VSO offices, all they do is just paperwork, so I think some people come here so that they can get a little additional to that.
Very good. All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. Tony, you looking for attainable housing?
Yeah, twenty-six. I'm up here.
Let me check.
Go to the, go to the third floor upstairs when you.
There's a third floor? Okay.
K-O-E-M.
Hello, how's it going?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome home.
O E M slash transitional officer. We appreciate your time that you've given to Ms. Kara. I don't want that to go without being said. Thank you.
It's been good.
Really good.
Chor, but good.
Yeah, she's doing great. Terrible, actually. I'm just kidding. It's been really good. Um, also, it's been interesting trying to switch back to that too, so we learned together at one point, but it's fine. Um, so, yeah, in between all of that, been trying to square some things up still. Um, with that, uh, Homeland Security, you were asking about that earlier, right? So next year's, the twenty-twenty budget will put in the corridors vehicle within the Homeland Security grant, um, budget line within OEM. Um, then the county match of that. Um, and then the twenty-eighteen Homeland Security grant, that was the security fence for the Sheriff's Office. Uh, I think they're, had their final invoices for that, was like the electric for it, and so, um, we'll just do all the smells for that one.
Move them out.
Yeah. Um, and then one thing I need to start pushing for Posse and MRC to spend their money. Um, there's still some training money and material supplies and stuff for MRC and also the VIPS, which is the Posse. Um, and so I think from my understanding is when they put it in, they had, they had very detailed, um, how they're going to spend it. And so it just kind of, when they decide, when Posse switched, people that were in charge, forget the gentleman's name, gentleman's name now. Um, anyway, so we just have to kind of restructure that, um.
Should have to be spent, they'll lose it.
Yeah.
Wins the deadline.
Um, it, we should try and close it out this year for it.
Is that October, end of October or the first, or is it the end of December?
The December, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and just try and figure that one out. Um, I'll get with them, talk to you that. Um, the quarter two report for the, um, or reimbursement, um, at first I was unsure if we were going to get the reimbursement just because of, um, a lot of the report was. if we were gonna get the reimbursement, just because of, um, a lot of the report was, so Cindy signed off on that report, and it was a lot of, um, postponed due to staffing changes and things like that. So Christine and I were like, kind of unsure if they were gonna reimburse that, but we haven't heard anything negative on that side, so I think we're good. And then, um, that's just like all the money stuff so far. If there's anything, just working on the budget, finalizing some stuff today and tomorrow for next year's budget. And then, just got a lot, random different things done, um, this month. Really excited, we drafted, uh, the ESF, the Emergency Support Function for ESF eight, um, the Public Health and Medical Services, so I got together with Alyssa and Cindy Flower and talked through, um, in general, that ESF, kind of how we're gonna work together and that kinda stuff, so that was really good. Started drafting the ESF seven, the Resource Management, and so how, as a county, you're gonna order all the resources, um, that process in stone before, um, before the thing happens. I went to a Hazard Mitigation Planning Refresher, which was really good. So as a county, we have a Hazard Mitigation Plan, and it's, um, to date for like five years, um, but I think ours is gonna go out, um, in two years, and so, um, the good thing about that plan is it opens up a whole lot of funding after something happens. Um, and so, um, like, a lot of money. And so, there's problems, though, if we don't have it up to date, um, then we just lose out on the buckets of money, um, if something happens. So, I'll budget a thousand in next budget, the twenty-twenty, and then twenty-twenty-one, budget three thousand. Um, and that's for a contract, right, like, a contract for a firm to write it. I did kind of research on how that would work if as a county rewrote the plan and redid it ourselves. One, I think, um, was it Gunnison County EM tried to write it, they have a two-person shop, they could barely do that. Um, Pueblo tried it, they're never gonna do that again, um, is what I've been told, and so, from the research I've done, it's better to do the, um, the contract to write it. And it's gonna be less because we have it already written, it's just gonna be some updates to be done with that. So that will be, just a heads up for that, for the budget. CES meeting was good. We talked through, um, the public health, the South Region Public Health, people came in and we talked through some, um, capabilities that we have as a community, and where we stand, and some training points that we should work on. Um, so that gave some good structure. Out of that conversation, we talked about mass casualty planning. Um, and so, Oc, in the beginning of October, I think it's the... Yeah, um, there's a mass casualty planning training. So we'll do that and then get together in our stakeholder group and iron out a good plan. And then I wanna build off that and do a tabletop exercise, and maybe even a functional exercise. Maybe we can get like, um, Sky Ranch, Horn Creek, some camps or something to maybe use some other people as part of it, um, cause that's kind of a big worry. The I-25 crash with the school, uh, bus, some month or so ago. Captain Smith from State Patrol emailed me an after action of that, and just talked about how he's been worried for years now, especially all the charters that come for the camps around. So that's gonna be a big push. And we have some buy-in from the different, um, responding groups now, so that's really good, so I'm just gonna kinda push with that. I don't think there's anything else pretty major, other than just doing some tweaking of plans and updating that needs to happen, contact lists and things like that. I decided not, I won't be attending the LEPC conference this week. I'm gonna have Ruth Roper go, still, um, but there's just a lot still to be done, and I think my use of time would better serve in doing those things instead of the conference. Well, it's good information and good networking and things, I think it will be...
Do it again, is that what?
Yeah, it's every year, so, um, and there's another conference, I think, beginning next year, so won't be really missing out too much, I don't think. Oh, and I guess the other big push will be ESF eleven, the ag plans for disaster. I'm gonna get together with one of your sense affairs done, and then kind of regroup on that. And then, just tracking along on the different, um, deliverables for the grant, but...
Letter to the C-Dot?
Yes. So, every time we have rain, hardscrabble just washes out, and, and have to close down that, a main in and out for the county for a couple hours. I think the second to last or last time, um, sheriff and, um, some of the deputies were out on the road, sh, themselves shoveling rocks out of the way to open it up. Um, so I was really hoping that we could, different agencies in the county, write a letter, or whatever you guys would think would be best approach, and requesting some mitigation efforts on, um, Highway ninety-six, especially down hardscrabble way, um, cause it washes out and we have to close that down. The last, in July, it closed down, we had two medical calls that happened within that, the road being closed down. Um, one was so bad that we had to call flight, so we didn't have to worry about that traveling time, but it adds on.
I'd heard that C-Dot was gonna try to do something.
Yeah.
Have you checked?
No, um, but from my underst, from my understanding, um...
Cause they have to.
That they haven't had, they didn't have anything planned for that area.
Yeah, but it's been, uh, but that's probably true, but maybe since then, maybe things have changed. I, I'd heard that. Somebody that brought it up that had been talking with them, I can't remember why.
Yeah, um, but even if they do have it planned, maybe they, like, still some, yeah, and still some letters could reinforce the need that is there. So I talked to Alyssa live, and she said that she would be happy to, for Public Health, all draft one, um, but if y'all would do that as well.
If you would be kind enough to give us a copy of each of yours, or lessons of both...
Get both. And just have the same.
Dovetail off that. I, I, I think...
Yeah.
Probably your good friends, or, but I think we should do that. I agree.
That'd be awesome. And then, I think the only thing other, we have the award letter for the EMPG grant for this year. So we have that thirty-six thousand, um, coming, and we just need to sign it.
Is it federal or state ground?
It's, it's federal that's passed through state, and then it's, yeah. So, that very last page is the signature. What's that?
Other than that?
Yeah, other than all of that, I'm just yawning in my daze.
Yawning.
I don't know, historically, I know, on the last one I signed, I wasn't sure if we needed to have a motion to sign that. I suppose we should, really.
Probably wouldn't hurt. But I had a move that we sign the letter of acceptance for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG.
Moved seconded, uh, sign the EMPG grant for twenty-twenty, discussion. Public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Thank you, appreciate it. I just would like to air on the side of...
That's accurate. It doesn't hurt to do it, but it could be a problem if we don't do it, so, let's do it.
You know, if some reason we couldn't meet a deliverable, they come back and say, hey, you guys signed the grant, and you two could say, wait a minute, we never talked about that.
Care about.
Yahoo signed it, but we never bought in on the deal, so...
Is that your new name?
Yeah.
Is that another FAWT term?
Thank you.
Clearing deck or whatever.
Um, I think I've, just to add, just to, just so you know, I've restructured some deliverables within the grant, um, whether some, like, the mass casualty, rather than a tabletop that was planned before, just because there's some efforts within the agencies, instead of trying to create some urgency, there's already urgency there, so I'm just going along with it. So, I talked to Chrissy Coleman about it, she said, yeah, whatever, as long as there's augmentation to prove it, so...
Yeah, I know, last year we got into a request to do a deliverable for somebody else.
Correct.
So...
Yes, so, yeah. Any, the, any questions or anything for me?
What's the, um...
What's that?
EMPG, yeah.
Um, Emergency Management Preparedness Grant.
Alright, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting, appreciate it.
Yep, good job.
Yeah, definitely.
Sheriff would entertain a motion to adj, oh, wait, no.
I move we adjourn. Take that back.
Yeah, planning is over next up.
Hey, guys.
Good morning.
Most people come with one or two pages of documents.
We already hugged earlier, so...
Oh, you did, so you've gone through that.
That was at breakfast.
Oh, at breakfast, who bought?
That was some video you gave me. I couldn't watch it on my own.
I haven't watched it yet, but... Alright, ma'am.
Thank you, Jackie.
Only what's necessary. No more twenty-five page documents for your staff report.
It's just in case, somebody walks up on you and says, I've got this letter.
And I'll remember out of the twenty-three that's in there.
We need a press release about storage containers in presence. Really, they're on a big article in the paper.
Jackie, would you...
Well, actually, I was thinking that, and also I was thinking, when we get done, we'll talk about our press release, cause we have other issues that are pending.
Where would you like to start?
Hammer it home.
Okay, so the first thing is your SUP that you rescinded the motion for, for the airport. Remember that?
Yep.
Okay, so now, um, the Planning Commission has actually looked at the SUP July first and agreed to it. So you need to make a motion that you agree again to the SUP for the airport, and then we need to send it to Kelly to get recorded.
And I move...
Do we have a copy of it?
Accept it, permit. And this is an SUP for what? SUP. Department for the airport to do, remind me, I'm just...
Okay, the SUP was, um, uh, they were cleaning up the original, because we had to change, authority and authority to advisory, and then they took out some stuff. So you should have the original, and then the new one.
Updated.
Because you made a motion on it, and then you had to resend the motion, remember?
I remember that, but I'm trying to remember what the SUP covered.
Okay, the SUP covers everything you can do at the airport.
Okay, well, let's take a little breath here, for a minute, because you're asking us to vote on something we don't have in front of us. It's not an advisory board, it's the Airport Board.
Uh-huh, so...
So, hold on, do it.
Um, let's see, we did that July first, so it's gotta be June.
September nineteenth, see, what was it, July, July the first?
July first, the Planning Commission, um, voted to approve it, then it comes back on you, but June, you guys rescinded the motion because you approved it before the Planning Commission looked at it.
Right. I remember that incident, but I'm really still, I'm sorry, I slept since then.
No, that's alright, so here's the one that was... I can, uh...
Just wanna make sure the document I've got lines up with this one. Page three twelve, or book three twelve, one ninety-seven.
This is a SUP for the operation of the airport?
Yes, sir.
And what did they change from the one that was previously in place?
It was an authority board, and...
Oh, changing it from the board to the... Airport authority to a board. Okay, so we just changed the name? And they, uh, they cleaned up some of the language. I remember now, I'm sorry.
I can go...
Some of it had to do with the signs.
And the signage items.
And penalties.
And penalties were updated. I don't think they had anything to do with it.
The email was June seventh, it was an attachment.
I remember it, it's in the mist.
But that's been a while, I, I found it on my desk, too, so you're not the only one, it's like, oh. So if you're good to go on it again, we could, um, not we, when I say we, I mean you, uh, do a motion to accept the special use permit.
I will make a motion to accept the special use permit as reviewed and amended by the Planning Commission, or rec, the recommendation they gave us.
Today? First thing on her staff reports.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded, so you're causing a little consternation here. Moved and seconded to, uh, approve the amended SUP for the Airport Board as presented by Planning and Zoning, correct?
Correct.
Discussion, only because you caught us unaware.
Right. I didn't read it at this...
Had your doc, had your pile of documents included this?
Wasn't it in your, um, agenda, Jackie? I thought I saw it, maybe I saw something else. Whatever you... Before we vote, just, because I'm not that swift, we approved it, and it hadn't been approved by the Planning and Zoning, so we said, oops, we made a mistake, so we rescinded it, sent it back to them, nothing has changed, they just approved, now it's coming back to us, just to show the procedure is proper. That's correct. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was right.
Yeah, we're just getting the procedure right.
And the motion was presented by... It's very important. Okay, I'm good.
Further discussion, hearing young, proceed to vote. Public comment. Hearing young will proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the amended SUP for the airport, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries.
Will you record that, and please give me a copy?
No signatures or dates of that action, huh?
In the future, we do something like this, I, I feel like I've got cold in my pants down, I mean, I wasn't...
There's another image I don't want. In the shower with my pants down, I stick it up.
So the first paragraph in her report indicated that we'd be talking about that. I just got by me, and I did not look it up, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, moving on, on September nineteenth, the Airport Board is meeting again, so I will be attending that meeting. I'm sending out a hangar lease document, uh, to a gentleman who owns a hangar, and he has said that he does not want the lease anymore. It does not have a hangar on it, a hangar building, it's just the site. That's a seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollar lease a year that they'll be losing in October.
What hangar number is it, you remember?
Number three. And, uh, what will happen is, along with the renew, sends out a letter that they have to sign that says, they have to sign the letter saying, we do not want to renew this. I'm also gonna speak with them about their ground leases. Mr. Naylor and all of us had sat down and did this ground lease. And then, it also says in the ground lease that the lease will be, I'm gonna give everyone at the airport a blank ground lease and see if they'd like it. Plus, every five years, the ground lease needs to be determined to see if twelve cents a square foot is adequate. So I'll be going to the Airport Board, the nineteenth, give them the recorded SUP, give them a blank ground lease, plus the cost of their...
We just want their recommendation and see what you'll bring to us.
I, yeah, I would, they need to review it.
Okay.
So that's what I'm doing the nineteenth. Bumblebee Storage, if you notice, is in your letters. This is an ongoing situation, if you notice, we wrote him a letter. I wrote him a letter, and then I sent it to the attorney, Mr. Smith, who's present, and he cleaned up the letter.
I see. So this was the letter that went out to him.
Uh-huh, and that's the first letter in your bundle.
Bumblebee is bill good.
No, no, no.
But, when you...
Oh.
No response.
As of now, no. But he is actually, um, further things will have to be, um, done with this, i, as you noticed in the letter.
Just the one they were living in, or something was going on?
No, it's just a storage units behind Shadow Ridge.
Yeah, I know where it is.
No one's living in it.
I thought there was an issue or something before.
No.
Okay.
No, he just hasn't done his conditions. He, at one time, he, uh, was ill, and so we allowed him a grace period, and then, uh.
Yeah, that's right.
I think it's pretty well spelled out in the letter.
Only thing that's not spelled out in the letter, September twenty-sixth comes and goes, and nothing's happened, then what are you prepared to do? We've been around the bases once already.
Um, September twenty-sixth comes, and we see no forward motion. He shouldn't have started business of renting them out before the conditions were met.
Your second sentence says, "All conditions must be met before you open for business."
Uh, so September twenty-sixth, he might have customers already renting those storage units. So I don't know legally how many weeks we have to, or days, we have to give someone to remove their stuff from.
I think that's his problem, not ours, if he's done, if he's in violation of that, we didn't make leases with the people who leased his containers. I remember this very closely, when we worked on this a year or more ago, and we were giving him total latitude because he was ill, and we were being Mr. Nice Guys here, you included, and I don't mean to call you that, but you know what I mean? The county was being supportive of someone who wasn't ill, who wasn't well. I think that's between him and his, his renters. And that, obviously, you'll wanna get legal counsel on this, but my opinion would be that's your problem. You breached our contract, you no longer have an SUP with us, and you work it out with your renters. That would be my opinion, but I'm, I kinda get, and I'm not trying to be a, a hard guy about this, but when we give someone, as long as we did, to get this in compliance, and he basically thunders nose at us, my opinion is, it's time to take action, assuming in your letter, he doesn't follow through. If follows through, I'm fine. That's just my opinion. Yes.
Good job.
Yeah, that's a legal opinion.
Yeah, my feeling is that certainly I agree with Commissioner Prince. If, what, if we mean what's in this letter, if we're gonna require him to put strips in that fencing and so on and so forth, then, then we mean it. If those are mild suggestions, then that's different. But if you're ready to drive a stake in the ground on this deal, I think we're ready to move forward with you.
Well, and I think you suspend the SUP permit immediately at that point, and give him.
Why don't we suspend it now, you look, look how recent.
She's already mailed this deadline of the twenty-sixth.
Did you already mail this letter? Oh, yeah, you did.
So.
But you have to, you know, give him time for his tenants to get their stuff out of.
And I think he's certainly been operating a business, I mean, some of those containers have padlocks on them, and have had for some time.
I agree, I've been out there.
Which means to me, he's renting them out, I've driven out there two, three times, so.
He's had, uh, three years to do it.
All conditions must be met before you open for business, I would maintain, he's probably already open for business, but.
We had a, this already.
Pardon?
Continue business.
So, I'm just asking, when September twenty-sixth comes along, then I assume the next commissioner meeting, if these conditions aren't met, you're gonna come to us and want us to suspend that SUP.
Is that correct? And lock, and lock the gate?
No gate.
Would it be worth having another letter saying, "Just a reminder, if you don't meet the conditions we set forth"?
Well, he just got this one, right, you just mailed this.
Twenty-third is when she's got it.
And he gets a certified and a non-certified. Time's up.
And I appreciate what you're saying, um, Bill.
Just to kick him in the.
My feeling is, my feeling is, he's had well over a year to come into compliance. We gave him every benefit of the doubt because he wasn't well. We need to take a stand and say, we're just not gonna roll over every time someone says, "I'm not well." And I, I feel for the man, because I know for fact, he's not well, that's not the issue though.
He's in business.
The issue is, he's in business, he needs to comply with our regulations, and if he doesn't, he needs to either be out of business until such time he comes in, or he needs to be out of business, that's my opinion, and I'm not trying to be a hard guy about this, but it's appropriate.
No, and he got it August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
That's what I'm saying, it's a year.
So, thanks for the update.
Two years, Jane.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, um, the rest are just letters.
Letters.
And letters, and letters, okay. So, I agree with, uh, um, notice to the newspaper, I would also like to add something else, so we'll, we'll go on, and then you'll see, and we'll see if it's appropriate. Okay, um, so it come to my attention that, um, a bunkhouse was, a house with a bunkhouse was being sold on a five acre parcel. Uh, the people that were interested in purchasing it was doing their due diligence, and they decided that they would like to take the bunkhouse and run water to it, and also rent it out. Well, um, they actually called Division Two Water, so I got a call from Division Two Water that says, "No. Your well permit is for your residence, which is your primary residence, so you cannot run water to your bunkhouse on five acres or less. But you can have a bunkhouse on your property with bedrooms unless you have a flushing toilet and plumbing." The plumbing code now is tied to the septic system. So, you have to have one flushing toilet and have a plumbing permit, but you can have water, but you could haul the water, but in our regs, you cannot rent, let, or lease a bunkhouse. So now we have an issue with these people getting bunkhouses on less than thirty-five acres and running a water to them plus another septic system. So in October, um, I would like to have a workshop, and I'd like, I'm, I'll get the date set, with Jerry Livengood explaining what has been going on, that now this water has become an issue, now we're gonna have to look through what we've been allowing as a county, because you can't say, "Water this," and then we're allowing something else. So it is my, if you have a nineteen seventy-two or prior well, then you don't have to worry about your water. But if, so now we got the bunkhouse issue. So in October, we will be having a workshop, hopefully with Jerry Livengood, and I would, uh, float around a couple of dates, and I would like all three of you to attend, because I think we all need to be on the same page.
Am I invited to?
Of course.
I thought that went without saying.
Can I ask a question about what you just said? We have regulations against it, on the five acres. Do we have any that are currently in operation that we've allowed?
Yes.
Oh, this is a problem.
Okay, so here's the deal. When the state redid their septic rigs about seven years ago, then they redid them about four years ago, they were called ISDSs, individual septic disposal systems. Then when they redid the regs, they called them outs. Okay, so prior to me coming on board, the prior administrator gave out a hundred and ten ISDS variances. That allows you to live in your dwelling or on your property with a chemical portable toilet. The state said, "No more," about five years ago. So I sent out a letter to everyone saying, "Nope, you can't do this anymore, you have to install a septic system." A lot of people complied, and I bet you I'm down to twenty-five of them. So this is what's going out now. This is your final outs. Okay. So I wanted to keep you a heads up on that. This is all the property in Custer County, who people are living on, that do not have a septic, but they do have a variance. And the variance was, um, legal. Let me show you what I did. Pardon?
Is there a time limit on the variance?
Yes, but no one paid attention to. Here's a house that doesn't have a septic system. And it has a variance. So what goes on is.
Do they have a porta potty down?
Uh-huh, so what goes on is, this one might not be, yes, this one's bad.
What's the time limit on it, Jackie?
Well, this variance was taken out in, uh, I don't know when that one was actually taken out, I got a whole year.
Like years or months?
Yeah, years. So I got a list of all the variances of, that was handed out, the state's saying, "No, that's not happening."
Handled out by the county.
Yes, so.
What does that mean, the state said it's not happening, they have to all come in and put a septic system in now?
You cannot live in any structure without a flushing toilet. I don't care if you have.
Whether it's a variance or not.
The way the state's not, the state does not allow counties to give variances.
You're not grandfathering.
You're not grandfathering any that happen.
You cannot grandfather health.
Okay.
So remember that, uh, you can grandfather a lot of things as county commissioners, but you're not allowed to grandfather a health issue. So here's the reg.
Make sure I'm with you. So the problem is now, every dwelling has to have a flush toilet?
Yes.
Period.
Period.
Regardless of whether they have a variance or not.
Correct.
So, and there are twenty-five properties that do not have flush toilets.
Correct.
And we're telling them, you either move away or put a flush toilet in. What's the option?
Are they living in them, or are they bunkhouses, or second houses?
Some, some are bunkhouses and some are dwellings.
Some of them are living.
But see, this is the problem, you're getting, uh, uh, you don't have a septic system. But you're getting a tax break with the property tax as a resident. And you, and so they're no different from you doing your due diligence and doing it right than, because they're getting the tax break. So here is the letter from the state, um, saying, uh, "No city, county, or city, or in, no city, county, or city and county shall issue to any person a permit to construct or remodel a building or structure that is not serviced by a sewage treatment works until the local public health agency has issued a permit for an outs." You can't occupy any structure without a flushing toilet. So I guess, um, we have the rule, I questioned the state again, and he says, "Yes, all structures are required to have an outs." So what has happened is, um, we are suffering in the zoning office because, um, people are buying tough sheds and moving them up here, permitting them as accessory structures, and telling me that they're storing their stuff in them, when actually they're living in them. And they're all throughout the county. But they figured out that if they say it's an accessory structure, then, uh, they don't have to put in a septic system. But a lot of my accessory structures have tongue and grooved Aspen inside. And, uh, I know that they're not using them as an accessory structure, but they're getting the benefits of residential taxes.
This is not a tax issue, this is a coming in to compliance with state law issue, correct?
Correct, it's also an issue where, how, how many sheds? I don't know how to do this, because I have, and I'm not exaggerating, fifty sheds with decks and porches.
And your assumption is, on each one of these, there's people living there inside it, that's their dwelling without a flush toilet?
And it might just be a part-time home, you know, like a vacation, but that's against the state.
That is not excluded from the roof, right?
Correct.
So every structure that someone lives in must have a flushing toilet. And you think you have somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty like this? And does the state give us a guideline on how long they have till they come into compliance?
No.
Okay, and what is, what is the rule of this in the planning and zoning?
We are against.
Recommended to us to do?
It's already against the outs regulations, and they came out four years ago.
Are you gonna board these buildings up?
It's immediate, actually.
Are you gonna board these buildings up? Tell people they cannot go in.
Well, that's. I'm sorry, because one of the problems we've got is proof, they come in and say, "Oh, it's just a shed," and without actually having, being able to go in and look, because I guarantee you, go to any of these for a spot inspection and go inside, you're gonna see beds and everything else in there.
Especially the ones that only have that shed, right? There are those cases, so they're living in them, period, is their primary.
I've got a neighbor that put a nice tough shed up, he's there, he comes very frequently on the weekends from Denver. Um, this weekend, I mean, I saw his vehicle was there, there was no trailer, there were no tents, uh, there's not any portable toilet or anything. He put one up, a portable toilet, for a month when he was first challenged on it, but I'm sure he's right back staying in there again, but.
So, so to me, it seems to me that we are already at a, immediately have to comply, or like Jane was saying, board them up.
But here's the thing, you can't, if I come into the zoning office and I get an accessory structure, and I show you my plans, and it's a tough shed with a porch or a deck or something on it, I can't sit there and say, "You're lying to me." It's not an accessory structure. It looks like you're gonna be living in it. So, I don't know how, the only thing that I suggested, and I know this is off the wall, but an accessory structure cannot have a deck and a porch.
I think you have a better way of doing it personally, yeah, if, if it's a, today, a building is built, you're gonna live in it, you have to have a building occupancy to, uh, design, right, to let them in.
You're setting off.
Right, and so in this case, I, I don't know why you couldn't have a, you know, and it's, it's up to you guys in the zoning, I would think, to say, if you're gonna build a shed, you can have a deck on it. You can do all that stuff, as long as you can show and prove that it is an accessory building.
True, and when Jackie comes out to give you.
As a.
When Jackie comes out to give you your compliance.
To give you a compliance certificate that it's a shed.
Do it anyway, I do it all the time, because that's how you close it out.
So then.
But when Jackie leaves.
Jackie goes out.
When Jackie leaves, the beds come in.
Sure, so then.
Stove and the refrigerator and all the rest of it.
You, you're gonna have to have authority, and I'm not saying you, but some official in this county gonna have to have authority, not to just walk in anytime they want, but have inspections, just like restaurants are inspected, the safety and health, I mean, and it, you don't, it's not Gestapo, you don't bust down the door and go in. But you write them a letter, you know, whatever. And you're gonna have to do that, I don't know how else you could.
If you give them a notice that you're gonna inspect, then everything comes out.
Temporarily. So what do we do?
Well, and does she have authority from the state to do spot inspections?
Well, it's a health, from a health point of view, she does.
From health and plus in the state statutes, I'm the only person that's allowed on the property. You can tell the assessor's office they're not allowed, but the zoning is. So I do have the authority, but I'm not coming in until Friday night to stay in my shed.
Yeah, like my neighbor comes out on his weekends. I think we just need to order her to work weekends too.
Get her Tuesdays and Wednesdays off.
But what I'm saying is, is, I have sheds on my property, and they don't have decks.
Well, I don't think you can define whether it's a accessory structure, or it's a, being used as a dwelling, whether or not it has a deck on it. We gotta come up with something a little more concrete than that. I would agree ninety-five percent of the time, if it's got a deck and there's a couple chairs sitting down, then they're living in it. But, they could certainly put chairs on a deck and sit in front of their accessory structure with the outs, they're living there, yeah, so.
It would be definitive if you looked inside and saw beds and a refrigerator. Now we could say, uh-uh, someone's sleeping there. So, peeking in the window, I'm not.
I, no, I, uh, all of them have their curtains on the window or paper.
Do they have an outhouse or a porta potty sitting down in front, that's a sign?
No, they're usually inside.
They are.
Chemical toilets.
Chemical toilets are inside.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, it's an issue, I don't think we're gonna solve it today, um.
I think you guys are hashing over.
You're gonna have a workshop and.
I'll add that to my workshop on the water too. I'll add that to my workshop on the water too.
It's too bad the onsite wastewater treatment system isn't an onsite wastewater leach system, then it could be owls.
Great idea. I'll, I'll suggest that to the state.
But I'll make this statement publicly. We can't turn the county into an HOA. And so we've got, you guys got to do some thinking and help with you. We can't have people walking around.
Well, I agree, but we also can't, can't.
There's got to be a way legally to come up with a, with a policy.
Comply with the law.
Yes, you do. And so we have that.
And that's why I'm asking them to go back to their, to their committee, the planning and zoning group, and say, come to us.
Yep.
On how we're not the Gestapo. Hang on a second, but how they're not going to be a Gestapo, but they're going to force people to comply with the law. It is the law. We need to comply with it. And there's a reason for the laws.
Sure.
For health and safety.
Just like any health thing or safety, any, in the police stopping a car from, for something that's not safe.
I've asked you to go back.
Got to figure that out.
Thank you.
Okay, so then the last one is, uh, Mr. Prince, thanks for looking at my video. Um, I believe that, and you have too, I would like to comment about the, uh, video that I gave. That happens on all the sites that a deputy goes with me. I also, uh, was with the DHS. If a child is removed, it costs this county, I believe Laura told me, two thousand dollars a month. There was no child on site, but we did have a report that there was a child on site. We had two deputies, so that was their wages. We had no idea what weapons were on site. Um, this has become, uh, tomorrow it's happening again. This is a frequent thing. We have got to get something together. And I know that unless you're in my position, you have no clue. But we need some kind of ordinance to be able to condemn these homes from people living in them. And I hate to say trash because it's not a trash ordinance like.
Safety issue.
It's a safety issue and we're, I know that the deputies get paid to put their, they sign up to put their life in danger. But this is getting to be an everyday occurrence. Not every day, every week it occurs.
Why am I not thinking that you have the authority to walk in without any judicial hearing, without anything and say, this home is unfit, you need to vacate immediately? You have that right, do you not?
Only when it comes to.
Health and safety with children.
What?
Septic?
Well, public health, if it's a public, public nuisance, if it's a public health issue. And Alyssa takes the position that it has, if it's confined to the property, it's not a public health issue. It has to come off the property. You know, like if rats are ringing to the house next door or something, but.
That's not planning and zoning.
Yeah.
So Alyssa only steps in if the trash is leaving the property. Because then it's public.
So why are you going out there? What, you said happens weekly. So what, what makes, what's the motivation to go out? What, what impetus does that get you going?
Neighbors' complaints, too many people on the property, no septic system. And the property should have been condemned prior to me going out there and it never was. Had the health inspector from Walsenburg, when Donna McDonald and, and stuff, they cannot find the report because that property should have been condemned.
So what is the condemnation process? If you walk in and say, this, this particular property, and what's excluded just for a moment, because I think Chairman Flowers is a hundred percent correct on the septic part. But let's just say you walk in and it's total squalor. We see the drainage and it's just pitiful. What process do you have or can you use to say, this particular dwelling is unfit for human habitation?
None.
None. It's not planning and zoning.
Who is it? Public health?
No, it's the lack of this county of having ordinances that dictate what is and isn't acceptable for dwelling or residence. We don't have it.
We have no building codes, so I guess that's the downside of not having a building code.
Building codes would change everything.
No, building codes wouldn't have.
It's how people live.
No, I agree. It's not, it's a health code.
You're right.
I mean, she is not the health department.
I get it.
She sees a lot.
So, so Alyssa can't do it unless it's hitting somebody else's property because we don't have an ordinance that says, you know.
But if you say, we need a junk ordinance, then people flip out and say, oh, who's going to dictate what's junk and not.
That's right.
We do not need a per se junk ordinance. We need a health ordinance. We need something in my preview that can say, and if you looked at that video, you could not walk.
Or somebody's purview, not necessarily yours.
You could not, you're right. Both towns have them.
Can I come over and see the video when we're done here? I couldn't play it.
See, the problem is that without defining clear cut what is a, one man's trash house is another man's paradise. And in this country, we are free to live like pigs if we want to.
That's right.
It drives Jackie crazy, I know that, but.
The only reason we can't live like how we want is if there's.
Affects somebody.
Children's involved.
Correct.
Or, or if it affects somebody else's property.
Oh, affects somebody else's property, but.
Or health.
So on this video, um, I guess, you know, do you want to go one step further and get, um, division of water up here? Because there's a drainage there. So what I'm saying is, you know, I could, I could take this step further, but when you start inviting the feds up here to look at property, it could be another ball wax. So somebody needs to get a clear cut thing. And I'm not saying, but when you live like this and you should, and I could get them for the septic. And I told them to remove themselves because they had no septic system.
Trying.
Well, I know you're frustrated, but you're also limited on what you can do, correct?
Correct. And if it's health, when it comes to sewage or human waste, I can do it.
Well, I'll try to find out what other counties do. I mean, they, most of them have building codes and everything, but. I mean, so people are free to build wherever junky place they want to live in, but, you know, it seems that what we're trying to say, they need some standards.
Well, but shoot, they're even allowed a client to hoard things and stack it up and live on top of the magazines, you know. Where do you draw the line?
Well, and that's.
That's the problem. And so unless it impacts somebody else, if he falls off his stack of magazines and kills somebody outside the window, that's a different story.
And condemnation legally is not.
That's right.
condemnation is a process where the state takes property to use for some other purpose. We wouldn't be taking their property, we'd be getting a court ordered to shut it down in order that no habitation can occur until it's cleaned up.
You'd have to have a health ordinance, you'd have to have a trash ordinance, you'd have to have a junk ordinance, you'd have to have something on the books to do that. And we don't.
And you call it trash or junk, then you run into a problem.
Right.
And that's just the outside. What, what allows you to go into somebody's house? Nothing.
Sewage.
Sewage.
Except for sewage.
Sewage, I got to see if you got a flushing toilet.
That's the only, but you only get to.
No, in the state statutes, zoning can go on your property.
Yes, you can.
And I can go in their house because they have to have a flushing toilet. But I'm telling you that I don't want to go in these people's homes.
I don't blame you.
I've been on EMS calls like that.
Hey, let's move on.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
On, um, this would not apply to ranches, is that correct? Because of farming and ranching.
Uh, well, I don't know what.
Because there are some branches that look.
When you say this wouldn't apply, what are you referring to?
If, if, you know.
A health ordinance would.
Something, it would.
Sure. If it's health or sewage, I mean sewage applies to branches.
Well, sewage, of course, but.
And if it's, if it was a health ordinance, sure.
Sewage is the only thing we're looking at, right at this point in time. And then also, uh, water source, you, um, if you're in a drainage with all this stuff. Okay, so, um, as you know, the Wet Mountain Fire Department took down the firehouse out at Lake Dewey's.
Nope, didn't know that.
And now they've, uh, uh, got three lots and they are ready to construct a new fire department on the three lots. Uh, they need to vacate the interior lot lines, which is a fifty dollar fee. And they need to purchase a zoning permit at sixty cents a square foot. Uh, I was wondering if you would waive the fee for that.
You were wondering, or did the fire department ask?
They didn't ask. I'm asking for them. We usually do, but I.
How many square feet?
That I don't know yet because they haven't got the lot line vacated.
Okay, and I'm assuming there'll be to us to get a vacation on the lot line, correct?
I already got it sitting on my desk. That's what I do.
Okay.
At their request.
At their request.
So how big are the lots?
Hundred by hundred.
Planning and zoning does lot line vacations?
They do. We've done that with Beck.
Why were we in here dealing with the lot line vacation at the airport?
Because you're the airport board?
No.
What, what lot line vacation did you do?
On the hangar. We just went through a whole.
Because the guy wanted to build.
I'm not asking you, I understand why we did it. I'm saying, why would we be doing that lot line vacation and not this one?
Because that's totally two different lot line vacations.
Okay.
He didn't get rid of the lot line. He wanted to build his hangar over the top of the lot line.
I thought we vacated the interior lot line of that property.
Nope, he didn't want it vacated. That's what we were in here for.
He wanted to have a condo.
He wanted to build that hangar over the top of the lot line.
The reason why, yes, I get that. I understand that.
And in our zoning regs, you can't do that.
The question is, how come you could vacate one, but you can't vacate the other? You without coming to the commissioners.
Because the airport, you were the authority on the airport. The SUP's for you and I wouldn't allow it. So they were asking permission from you to allow it because.
You could have approved it, but you chose not to. So they were, they were asking us to override your decision. Now I understand.
Because the gentleman wanted to build that hangar.
I understand that now.
Fairly enough.
Understand that now.
And I wouldn't allow it.
And Lisa, yeah.
Boy, you're a bundle of joy today.
Ask Mr. Smith.
Well.
So what's the issue here with the fire department?
Would you agree to waive the fees?
I will not until we know how much they are.
This is exactly right. How much are we talking about?
Hundred and fifty.
And where it's at and.
You'd be vacating two lot lines?
Yes. That's fifty dollars.
A piece?
No.
Just one?
Okay.
I don't care about the fifty dollars. I mean, but I don't know why we'd.
Why wouldn't we do it?
Well, we have no idea how much money we're talking about for number one.
What, what do you mean? Who cares? If, you know, it's, well, I. Why wouldn't we approve it in the end, no matter what it costs?
Do you want me to run and get their thing while you guys take a break and splash some water on you?
If, uh, if we take a break, I would imagine it will entail a journey, but.
I can run right over to my desk and get their permit.
Uh, their billing permit?
Uh huh.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Sure. So we're just recessing.
I think she's walking though.
You said you were going to run, young lady. It's running for her, it's running for me.
I think we're just.
We're just pausing.
Pause, I got to pause.
Yeah, I certainly thought we were in the habit of doing lot line vacations, but let me go back and look.
They do. We did, Beck was applied for one.
She pretty much doesn't if it's not.
The zoning board did it.
Non-controversial. If there's something that might be a little complicated, she has been bringing it to us.
And as, as an attorney, how do you define that?
She's just wanting, she wants her to not take the fee is a thing that we would have to agree to.
So they want to vacate, they have three lots and they want to vacate two of the lines? And there's a fee to do that and so she wants you to waive.
She wants us to agree to waive in the fee.
No, that's not true.
What's true?
She's asking us to waive the bill, or the zoning permit. Uh, Councilor, do you have a home address? Because it seems like we're accumulating.
Oh, that's mine too. I forgot. It got moved over there. It was sitting here and I was going to get it at the last minute.
I couldn't pick it up.
Okay, well, it's, it's your American dollar.
Yeah, I had Tara move it because I wasn't talking. Yeah. If you don't mind us going through the boxes. Uh, let's see here.
Apparently there is a, uh, some confusion in what Jackie is asking for.
We're going to find out when she gets back. So to clarify before we go any further, let me look real quick. You're asking two things here, correct?
I'm asking you to waive two fees.
Okay, thank you.
Which are fees for what?
One's a lot line vacation. Because they cannot build across lot lines.
So is it two lot line or one? What, what's the other one?
It's two lot lines, but it's one fee.
Okay, and what's the other thing?
And the other one is a zoning permit to build the firehouse.
Okay, two different things.
So before I can give them the zoning permit, the lot lines have to be vacated.
Got it.
So this is the lots. They got a deed for this from one gentleman. Here's the lot line. So one lot, two lot, three lots.
Why isn't that of the lot line showing up on that map?
Because I have a deed for this. This is just for my reference, showing that I already have the deed.
Who has the deed? For what? That's the old fire station?
Yeah. This is Jane McCarty. We're waiting for her to give a deed to the, to the fire department.
Move your hand so I can see. The one right next to it.
Yes.
Okay.
So they'll own all three of these lots.
Thanks.
The lots are one, two, and three in, uh, plot five. They need to turn them into one lot and the lot will be known as one A, block five.
Right now it's lots one and two, correct? Not one, two, and three.
Right now it's one, two, and three, but I already got the deeds. I'm just, for reference, yeah, for reference, I did this.
Right. You got the deed for that?
No.
No, I'm waiting for that one.
She has the deed for the original fire station.
So McCarty, Jane donated the other lot to the fire department. So she has to do a deed to the fire department. Then I do a lot line vacation. I rename the lots and then they got to do a deed from themselves to themselves. That's a fifty dollar charge. Their building that they want is thirty-three by sixty-eight. It's two thousand, two hundred and forty-four square feet at the cost of one thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and forty cents.
Okay.
Three hundred and forty-six, forty.
Thirteen fifty, basically.
I'm asking the commissioners to waive the fee.
And they didn't ask to waive the fee to you?
No. Uh, in prior, we waived the fees for the government and specially people.
So there are special tax district.
Yes.
What's the building, one thousand?
Three hundred and forty-six, forty.
And then fifty dollars for the lot line?
Yes.
Four hundred dollars for a.
Fourteen hundred dollars.
Fourteen hundred dollars?
No, thirteen fifty for the.
Thirteen ninety-six, forty would be the total.
Plus the fifty.
No, that's total. Thirteen ninety-six, fifty, forty.
Both fees.
Both fees. I'm asking if you would waive that fee.
And we've done it in the past. We, the board of somebody's board.
Yes.
Did Kit bring this in to you?
Roger.
Roger did.
I don't want to just, it's like charging ourselves. I don't know why we wouldn't.
I don't know how you could say that, Commissioner Cannon. They're, they're not county. They are a special.
I, I, I understand that. I get it.
Okay.
But they're, they're also.
Doesn't clear up why. I don't understand why you say that. How could we be tack, or charging ourselves? That, that has nothing to do with the county.
Because I pay fire taxes too.
Exactly. We all do.
We all do. That's. That's my point. And so we're just putting it from one pot over to the other.
But you said it's like charging ourselves.
Well, I meant not the board, I meant.
Well, that's what we're representing here, it's the board, correct?
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm representing the county constituency, just like you are, I get it. So, and if we've done it in the past, if we charge them, what, what are they gonna do? They're gonna, they're gonna get it out of the money that they got to go buy fire hoses and impact me and everybody else in my district or in my precinct. So I'm just going through the logic here a little bit and thinking out loud, so we can have a discussion or not.
Let me take it one step further. What if a five oh one C three or other form of nonprofit came to us and said, we wanna build something? Are we gonna waive that too?
No. And the reason is because it affects fewer people, it's not the county. It's different. My opinion.
Buy it.
It's just my opinion, buy it or not.
Go ahead.
Prior to this, we have waived a fee of a five oh one C three for a special event permit for a race.
This isn't a special event permit.
Yeah, that's different.
If a five oh one C three wants to build a theater or some other five oh one C three came in and said, I wanna build something and they, they need a permit, are you gonna charge them? Are you gonna come to us and say, let's waive it because we waive all nonprofit? If, if Ed with Ranch came in and said, we need to build another outbuilding, okay? Are we gonna waive their fee?
Not without your permission.
And we probably wouldn't.
Yes.
Well, a couple of things, uh, from where I sit. I don't want you to answer yet, but I am gonna ask you why you're asking us to do this. And secondly, uh, if this was a county entity, planning and zoning wanted to build a building and you're asking for a waiver of expense, I could understand that. The hospital district, the library, we could go down that list. Those are all tax-supported districts, special tax districts. They are not county entities. So with that being said, I would ask you why you're asking us to waive it for a special tax district?
In prior years, I've always asked.
Okay.
I ask on everyone that's a five oh one C three that comes before me, uh, special district, I ask the commissioners if they would waive the fee. Because anytime a fee is waived, whether I think it should be or shouldn't be, I ask the board. And in prior years, the fire department has been waived, but that doesn't.
Can you cite that specifically?
Yes, Rosita Fire Department, um, thing, the one out in Hillside, um, the new one out in Hillside, the one, they, the one in Oak Creek, two fifty-five.
See, I, I, I'll just comment here again, I would agree that you would take a case by case basis. And in the case of a small special tax district, it doesn't impact everybody. You know, that's not a bad thing. But in this case, it, it is a safety for the whole county issue, might be. I don't have a problem waiving it.
But, but they receive tax money.
Right.
And they're up the hang on a second place. They have their own tax money, they are a special tax district, they receive mill levies to take care of their own business. They should take care of their business and we should not be part of that.
So do we.
We're not part of buying fire trucks for them or hoses or paying for their training. I mean, this is their business, they should pay for their business.
I agree. And my only issue again was it just, it's paying, it's taking it from one pot to the other for the same tax.
I disagree completely. It is not the same pot.
Yeah?
It is a separate taxing district.
No, I agree. I understand, but the district operates the county.
It may be the same individual paying taxes to the county and to the fire department.
It's just shifting the money.
It's not our pot that we're taking it out of. It's their pot and they're paying their way like they do when they buy a fire truck, when they buy hoses, when they train people, when they buy a Coca-Cola for their machine. We don't subsidize that.
I agree.
And I thought I would end on a high note.
With the painting.
So do you have the authority to waive the lot line vacation fee?
No. I don't have the authority to waive any fees.
You told me you had the right to waive lot lines.
Lot lines.
No, I have the right to.
I asked about the fee for that. Fee, I'm sorry.
I don't have the authority to waive fees.
Would you like the board to act on this today?
Yes, so that I can tell them that how much money they owe or don't owe.
It's the group's pleasure. Chair would entertain a motion to the effect of waiving the fees for around, uh, Wet Mountain Fire? Okay, we'll move forward.
Let's, uh, I, I move that we waive the fee for the lot line. I'm not gonna, I'm, I can go either way on the, I don't have a problem with a lot line.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna second it because I wanna make a comment that's not appropriate for me to say without seconding it.
They moved a seconded, the way the lot line vacation fee.
It should get on the, right.
Discussion?
I am unprepared at this moment to vote yes or no. I am not discounting completely. I'm not discounting it. When I think it through as an entity, I have an issue. But I don't feel I'm, I'm in a position at this moment to vote for or against. So if there's.
Further discussion?
I'm gonna vote. I will tell you now, when the vote is called, I'm gonna vote no so I can get more information. It can come back up again if it, if someone chooses to.
Further discussion? Public comment?
Yeah, I think it's a slippery slope. If you're friend, friends with the fire department this week or kinda on the outs with them next week or the clinic comes and says, you did it for the fire department, just think it's a slippery slope.
Further discussion? Hearing no, proceed to vote. All in favor of waiving the lot line vacation fee, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails.
Get it out on the table, that was good.
That was fun.
Anything else?
Um, so, uh, one more thing.
Okay.
Before I go, um, I would like to do an article in the paper about the containers and the rolls and stuff. Um, so I, that'll will be coming out because most of these people were actually, uh, either turned in or busted, so.
Do you, are you prepared to handle this? Does it have to come back before the commissioners, this press release, or are you okay?
If you wanna write it for me, that'll be good.
So it's an, it's only can, on the container issue? Is that it? It has nothing to do with, uh, the health issue and other things you've seen? Uh, I'm, I'm thinking out loud here again.
I actually think that.
Press release and I like the idea of explaining to the public issues that you see in your position.
I think that a large press release with, uh, uh, maybe some other key points in it that I see arising, you know, and explain, hey, you can build a hundred square feet or less and not require a zoning permit. Setbacks still apply though, and stuff like that.
Right, and then can't.
They need to understand specifically about storage containers.
Right.
That's become a big.
That's what you're after, really.
Right.
Can I suggest rather do a press release? We actually buy maybe half page ad and account pay for it. That way we control how it's laid out, specifically what we say, and it's a, it's a, it's a common.
Sort of a learning.
Us to get the information out. I mean, I, I fully trust the press, I mean, I really do. But if we do it, we could make borders around and make it pretty and, you know, county residents, please understand. And then, or whatever you choose to do, I, I feel we should.
See, I do too, and I think getting people aware that there are people here that are, that are have issues and that, you know, health is an issue and.
Right.
You know, in lieu of ordinances, I mean, you don't have to say that, but my point is get it out to the public so they know what we're dealing with.
I would volunteer to assist you in writing something up.
Okay, my fingers hurt right now, so could you get started?
You know, hockey.
You know, you never know when to quit. You know, watched his face for the last twenty minutes.
You probably wouldn't want me to be writing.
You know what, actually, I have never been scared by a man.
No, really?
My mother, yes, a man, no.
Good mom.
I've watched Body Camp videos, so maybe that statement's true, I don't know.
I saw her get her face six inches from Bob Katnick's face in the meeting when he crossed her.
There is that.
Don't you do that.
Anything else, ma'am?
That is no easy feat. I've done it, it's no fun, trust me.
Couldn't get.
Okay, so, um, I've been really busy, uh, as you noticed. Um, so I will price you in a couple more months.
Oh, really? You don't do monthly staff repairs?
I really would like not to. How do you think about that?
I think that's fine.
Thank you.
Come back and.
I'm just assuming you didn't because you're always.
You come in with too much.
Mostly ones that they like shorter.
I still roll them up.
Yeah, that's right.
Will you be there for a few minutes? So I can see the video or else Laura can show it to me. Cause I could.
You watched Body Camp?
Really? Bring popcorn.
Okay, uh, let's get back to our agenda. Any unfinished business come for the group?
I have none.
New business? We inadvertently take care of the new business item on our consideration of appointments to the EMS group, work group. Public comment?
Can the public do that? I want to stay.